The council work meeting to order at 6:04 PM. And I would ask the city clerk to call the roll, including council members and staff.
Mayor Pro Tem Girba?
Here.
Councilmember C.O.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember De La?
Here.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Here.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Here.
Mayor Morrow?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
City Engineer Fordice?
Here.
Waste Water Treatment Plant Superintendent Whiteoski?
Here.
City Treasurer Bennett?
Here.
Police Chief Hart?
Here.
Parks and Rec Director?
Here.
Very good. Then at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. Mayor Pro Tem Girba, would you move to approve as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. And again, for the public's benefit, we are discussing the Sage Compensation Report that was submitted to us earlier this year. So if you have a comment or question, reference the compensation study. Now would be the time to ask it. I will note, for the benefit of those who are participating remotely, there is no member of the public present in council chambers. And I would ask the clerk, Clerk Royal, did we receive any comments or emails in advance of tonight's meeting? You might be muted, Terry.
We did not.
Okay. And are there any comments or questions that have been typed in under the chat icon?
Just translating.
Okay. We'll give it just a few more seconds. If you'd like to type in a comment or question, please feel free to do so at the bottom of your screen by clicking into the chat icon. Okay, the record will note that there are no citizen comments. Then we'll proceed to the one discussion item of the evening, which is the Sage Compensation Report. Before I turn it over to our guests, Acting City Manager Green, do you care to make any statement this evening?
Sure. As you guys know, we've been working on this for pretty much since January, at least. You guys received this from about a month ago. It is a large document. Heidi and her team did a great job, and they're going to go over a lot of information today. So if you have questions, please feel free to ask them. They're here for us to hopefully make us a better organization.
Very good. Thank you, Acting City Manager Green. We have guests with us from Sage, I believe the same two ladies who were with us two weeks ago. Is that correct? Heidi, are you with us?
Heidi, you're muted.
We are muted, yes. Sean, Cherry, and Heidi are all here this evening.
Very good. We welcome you. I do want to note for the record that we will need to conclude tonight's work meeting promptly at seven to reconvene into regular session. So I'd ask that you exercise as much brevity as possible. We might not be able to complete our discussion this evening, and if not, we will add it to an upcoming meeting agenda. So with that, I will turn it over to our guests from Sage. If you'd like to spend maybe the next fifteen to twenty minutes going over the compensation report, and then we'll open it up for questions, beginning to my left with Councilmember Del Orco, then moving to Mayor Pro Tem Girba, and then I will probably call on C.O., Mitchell, Dylan, Kamara Sulek, in that order. So with that, the floor is yours.
Okay. I am going to talk super fast so that I can hit that fifteen minutes. I was chatting earlier today, and I said it's an entire semester of compensation boiled down into a quick conversation. So stop me if I'm not making any sense, and please feel free to, I'll go a little fast so we can answer any questions at the end. Hopefully, this intro will help us with any information that is contained within the book that we had to compile. You guys see this?
Yes.
Okay. So this is kind of a rehashing of what our goals were. We're going to first look at a job analysis and the job descriptions. You have to really do a good comp study. You have to really know what the jobs are and what they entail. And that helps us to build up the job grades. At this point, I believe we built out seven grades. And then from there, we conduct the compensation study, and we do that really nearly by looking at the job descriptions, the job analysis, and we do that without, you know, full understanding of your wages, so that it can be a, well, consider a super clean look, not going, oh, well, they make this, let's try to find out what that's for, what they make. That's not a good idea. And then the next thing is training. And part of the training will be today, and it'll continue throughout as we kind of firm this entire study of completion out, because it's really not good if you don't understand it. I always fear that it'll be something that's just thrown on a shelf and left there, because it's too complex. And you do owe your two training modules of your choice in addition to this. So what do we do with it? So what we will not see, what do we do with this? Right now, we provide this with you with an understanding, and our goals are not for us to solve all the dilemmas and not to review it all tonight. So we won't see everybody's wages in a detailed analysis of, oh, this person was paid too much, too little, just do that. What we're doing tonight is we're going to show you kind of how it breaks out into the seven wage grades, and give you an understanding of, you know, where the bulk of individuals fell, above, below, or, you know, right in time. And then really, phase two is where you've got to really look at the data and make certain that it matches. Some examples might be, somebody might fall completely off, but we might not know that they were just promoted a year ago into that role. So we might be evaluating, you know, fifteen years in the job when they've really, really been in that job, too. So there's some study that has to occur after all the data is presented. All right. So what we're, what the entire premise of the wage plan that we are working on for you has to do with a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. By the way, you picked the poorest writer here. And that's what we look at. In almost every single wage plan, you're looking at, you know, what's the minimum starting grade? What's the midpoint? What's the maximum? If you were to hire an individual or place ads where you wanted to put wages in, you would shoot between here and here, okay? That's what you'd want to hire them in between. You would never want to go all the way to here, because then they've got no room to grow. They're at the top of the, they're at what you deem to be the maximum value of that position. Okay? And when you write a formalized wage plan, and this is what your next phase has to be, is you would define why you would pay somebody past that minimum. So in this case, I can't really see it on the screen, it's going to go. So it looks like it's different. So if we were to start a wage plan, not that this would fly, right? Never would fly. Okay? We would hire somebody between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, and what we would do is justify why we hired them between those ranges. So at ten, they might have one year experience and a bachelor's. And that's what the minimums or requirements are, but we would prefer something a little bit more. We would prefer five years and a master's.
Ladies, I'm sorry to interrupt, but my IT director informed me, we think we have removed the individual or individuals who is causing us problems. So if you would like to return to your PowerPoint, it's totally your call, but we think we are safe now.
We'll keep it going right here.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
We might put twenty-five hundred, a value of twenty-five hundred on that one, and twenty-five hundred on this one. And that would get us to the fifteen. And this would really support in your wage plan why you might hire two people at different rates. So you might hire a male, and you might hire a female, and they might be at different rates, because you put a value of twenty-five hundred on a master's degree and, you know, twenty-five hundred on more experience. So years of service, education, experience, certification, all of those things might go into why you would pay past the minimum. Okay? So let's talk about two people hired to Sage. Oh, this is much better, hon. Okay, let's go live. This is so much better live. You don't have to go out this out, trust me. Because this really supports an understanding of how you would build a wage plan out before we look at some of the data. So we're going to go back in, if you'll share the screen for us. Can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, so they can see this. You probably have my head all big though now. It's right at my face. One more sharing, just one second. So this is everything I just talked about right here. I forgot about all the word people. Again, see that? Okay, now we're good. Can you see it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Let's hope our friends will come back. All right. Okay, so two people hired, same position, same tenure, different pay, right? Different sex. So is there a problem we need to address? Maybe, maybe not. And that's where, this is where the wage plan, where we looked at where there is some differences. There's a chance that we don't have to, and we wouldn't have to in the future if we really looked at our study, our compensation study in time. So here's a real live example of what we might see, okay, of two different individuals, and why the differences sometimes really grow far and fast on you. So you have a position that pays fifty thousand at a minimum, and your midpoint is fifty-seven five, and a maximum is sixty-five thousand. Requirement is a bachelor's, two to five years of experience. Prefer the master's with six plus years of experience. And we're putting five thousand dollar value on a master's and twenty-five hundred on experience. Okay? The male happens to be the one with the master's and eight years of experience. The female comes in with the bachelor's and three. So she would come in at the standard rate of fifty thousand, and he would come in at a rate of fifty-seven five. Now, a comp ratio, and what a comp ratio does is it actually measures where you're at relative to the midpoint. So we're always looking at sixty-two five. Where does this person sit relative to sixty-two five? And so in this example, if a person was at, really right now, making sixty-two thousand five hundred, we divide sixty-two five by sixty-two five, and we'd get one point zero. Can you see where that's at on the comp ratio? Can you highlight that, honey, right there? And that would be a three percent. So that would be assuming that we've kind of wanted our average increase to be three percent. Now, a person that was making less than sixty-two five, like fifty thousand, you would divide fifty by sixty-two five, and you would come up with point eight, okay? The person that's making fifty-seven five, you'd divide fifty-seven five by sixty-two five, and they would be at point nine two, okay? So what you can see here is that person that started off at the bottom would get a bigger raise, four percent, than that person that started off higher into the wage plan. He would get three percent, and at your first year increase, hit the button, okay? And then, when you go year after year, so go to three, the math will keep starting over and over. So as you keep going, they start to balance out, okay? So you see how their disparity becomes less and less? Until this one's matched out, the other one keeps going until they even out. Now, the one of the ways that you can do that would be is if you provided them, so you can let the wage plan work it out over time. In some cases, where here, there's a larger disparity, disparity, it takes a while. In other cases, the difference might be a thousand dollars, in which case it would settle itself out a lot faster. Or you could do what's called an equity adjustment, which is you do a one-time bump for that person to bring them up. It does not impact future increases. In fact, it doesn't impact the increase of that year, and it pulls that person forward a lot faster along the wage plan line. So there's two ways, or a combination of both ways to correct a wage that is falling behind. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody, does it make sense how to calculate a comp ratio?
Yes.
Yep.
So it's always where you're at relative to the midpoint. This way, no matter what the employee's wages today, based on the number of years of service, if we set these wages, we could figure out where everybody should be based on their years of service, and get them into what we would consider a relevant range. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And that's what we have done for this compensation study. So we had to get some assumptions on what we felt is though by job grade that people should fall into, and then based on that, we evaluated their wage against that. And now I'll have Sean take a look at some of the other findings relative to the grades and how far out we were. And then we'll be about ready for questions.
Yeah. Is that all right? I know that we probably don't have over fifteen minutes by now.
A few minutes.
So to emphasize what?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is it Sean? Is that correct?
Sean. S.T.A.N.
Yeah. Oh, very good. Yeah, if he could speak up, because we're having some difficulty hearing him, that would be marvelous.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
So to kind of reemphasize what Cherry had said is, everything that we've done, this entire block of numbers, brings us to the point where we can use that kind of an analysis to help you draft budgets, to help you identify if there's a certain group or a certain person that might be falling a little bit further behind for whatever reason. And we can bring them up, as Cherry described, through an equity adjustment, or just over time through that mathematical comp ratio grid. As an example, we're looking at grade one. This is what we're termed as regular employees in your, in your data, non-regular employees. So if you look at all the people that are in this grade one, what this pie chart is showing you is that thirty-three percent, and in this particular case, we're only talking about three people in this grade, thirty-three percent are at a comp ratio of one point five, which is pretty far to the right, and they're being compensated very, very well compared to the grade that we're talking about. A third is at point nine, which is kind of where you expect an employee to be, somewhere in the relative range of one. And there was one employee in this range that was making, that the comp ratio was point six, and that's, that's the kind of person that we would identify as, we want to take a little closer look at. Why are they making that? Have they just been put in this position recently? Have they been promoted? Is there a performance issue? There could be a number of things that could explain it, but we want to look at that and make sure that that person is being treated equitably. And if there, if there is an adjustment to be made, then we can discuss how that adjustment might look over the course of time. This is grade three. There were no individuals in grade two, so that pie chart was kind of boring. This one, this one shows a pretty, pretty decent distribution. People are around the midpoint quite nicely. Next one is grade four. There's an even distribution with twenty-five percent. That might be a little low. We might want to look at it. Grade five was probably the one that stuck out the most to us. Two-thirds of the people were maybe a little low in this grade, and we might want to take a closer look at that. Grade six represents that one corner in the top right represents the lowest comp ratio we found. So that might be, that simply might be a mathematical error, or it could be someone that we really, really need to look at as far as, or the job description might be accurately reflecting what this person is doing. The position by virtue of the score, we're talking about the risk scores and the possibility scores, might have ranked much, much higher than the title and the compensation, and the way they've been put into a grade that is higher than the relative value that's been considered over years without them. And then grade seven looks pretty good.
Those are all the grades?
And those are all the grades.
So we've got, we've got the grades.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's the ten-thousand-foot view of the information, and what we can and would love to do with that information to help to take the next step. And we're happy to field any questions and any comments, and any thoughts on how we can improve this.
Very good. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. Ladies, thank you as well. This is a, this is a big, this is a very comprehensive and detailed analysis to discuss, and so we will not come close to concluding our discussion in deliberation this evening, but we will have time for one round of questions. I would note, for my colleagues' benefit, that we have a little less than a half hour remaining, so each of my six colleagues will be given about five minutes, and I'll notify you when your five minutes has concluded. Also, for the ease, for ease in responding, if you would indicate to which one of our guests you are asking your question, if you know, that would be, that would be helpful. Again, I'll begin with Councilmember Del Orco to my left, transition to Girba, then go to C.O., Mitchell, Dylan, and end with Councilmember Kamara Sulek. So Councilmember Del Orco, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Morrow. I'm just curious, with respect to the ratios that you just presented in the pie charts, for that situation, what we would do next, moving forward, is to do a deeper dive and to look at how we would apply equity adjustments to various job titles, or is that not the way we would go?
That is a way you can go for sure.
Can I, can I?
Yeah.
Two quick things. The first would be the accuracy of the data, and did they, did they transfer into the role? So is there a logical reason that explains it? If no other logical reason, then equity adjustment and the development of like that comp ratio to help rule it out over time. But we have to first kind of do a dive into that personnel box.
Right. So this is more of a cursory view, and then we get more granular as far as looking into why that those ratios are presenting as they are?
Correct.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
In a broader sense, too, you're not even, you're not just looking at the outliers. This is a very good tool to help you develop your budgets, because even the people that are in the relative range of one, or eight, or nine, we can, if we, we can, we can back into numerical raises based on that in an equitable way that fits your budgeted amount for compensation increases.
Like we showed you on that comp ratio grid, you might say that people above one point five percent don't receive a raise.
Right.
Maybe they get a lump sum bonus, but no raise. So you can really help to fit the budget into, you know, what the wage plan should be based on a budget.
Right. And given that you've divided up the staff, total staff numbers into these various different grades, one through seven, I would imagine the ends in each of those groups are relatively small, and therefore even one or two employees could have a dramatic impact on the ratios that you're presenting here.
That is very true.
Okay. So do we have a sense of how many job positions or descriptions are affected here in the performing less-than-desired category?
I would say you're in the neighborhood, and this is, this is the, for simplicity's sake, we use regular employees. Regularly labeled employees usually tend to go with the Parks and Rec Department.
Right.
That number is in the, is over a hundred. In the regular, you're dealing with a total of twenty-four, and I would guess you're ten, ten to fifteen percent people that are outliers that you would need to look at.
Okay.
Not a large, not a huge number.
Somewhere between five and six.
Five or six.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. The last question I have is, is the private sector represented in your comparisons on your data analysis for cross-sectional comparisons?
Where we could, where we could use private, we did. We found a good amount of benchmark data from other municipalities, and we adjusted that based on your, no, it's based on the general fund was the comparative factor that we used. We used, we used the general fund as an merit base, and then we also looked at economic, the metropolitan economic of where we took the data. For instance, if it was out of state, although we did a lot of in-state stuff, but if it was out of state, and Indianapolis has a higher percentage of wage, we factored that in along with the general fund, and came up with a way to factor the data so that we could compare a city like Saline to a city like Indianapolis.
Okay.
I don't think we actually did that, but, but it gives us a method of smoothing things out.
So the question was, did we use?
Private.
Some, I believe there is some, but the overall, the majority are municipal.
Okay. So the bulk of this is through municipal employees?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have right now. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Del Orco. Mayor Pro Tem Girba, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this study greatly, because this is what I'm used to using in my own profession and understanding, being able to understand the ratios and so forth when we set salaries and the compensation. As you mentioned, and we looked at this from total compensation, could you give a brief, quick summary over what you saw in terms of our total compensation compared to other municipalities? Where did you see us falling in terms of a comparable approach? Where did you see us falling in terms of a comparable approach?
We, we saw you lagging a bit with other municipalities, and we also saw a, a difference based on a regular merit increase, assuming people received a regular merit increase over time. We also saw a difference between where we would have presumed their compensation would be versus where their compensation actually was. It's all kind of lagging a, a little bit. And what we, what we would suggest in this case is, is not a complete grading of the, like, if the city competes and they got for that, you have to emphasize where your strengths are when you're recruiting and trying to retain employees. And by that we mean, so in integrated cities, there's a benefit to working in such a nice environment. You mentioned.
Yeah. Like I, what I'd put it as is, if you, if you had a small practice outside of U of M Hospital, you can't value that small practice the same as you value U of M Hospital.
Yes.
You know, of course you're going to make less money, but you're not going to have to work weekends and nights, and you're not going to be a number, you're going to be a human. And so there's, there's a, there's a lot of value in, in a small city like me. And that might have to be pushed a lot more than recruiting efforts than the almighty dollar.
Right. And I agree. And I think that's one of the things that we needed to see this in order to understand because there was some kind of premise that certain types of benefits or things are greater than what we would perceive in other, in other cities and organizations, and it's not necessarily the case. And this is helpful for understanding that.
Right. No, you're not there.
Okay. One of the things that when I was looking at was the weighted scorings, and in some cases, understanding the abilities and whether the accuracy of our job descriptions and so forth, do you feel are, are clean enough for us to take this study as being a, a well-balanced approach?
Yeah.
Well, you cleaned them up.
Yeah. Yeah. The answer is yes.
Okay.
I think through, through cleaning them up on our end and the study with the compensable factors, we think that you have some solid job descriptions at this point, and we use those job descriptions to take it to the market and compare them to comparable positions.
So the key thing with the job analysis that helped us clean them up is that everybody in the position that they had, they had to go through all of the job tasks so that we could be very clear on what the essential functions were at the end of the day. And when you, when I looked at all of the different job analysis that came back, what I found is that employees took it seriously. They deleted items they said, "I haven't done in four years." They added items that said, "I've been doing this for a long time." And they modified items if they said, "You know, it's close to what we do, but this is how you should work it because this is really what I'm doing."
I'd say they took it a lot, they took it seriously, and a lot of work was put in for the employees, a lot of work on it.
If they all come back blank, I, I worry that it was taken seriously, but I really do feel they did.
Great. That's good to hear.
As a side note, from our perspective, we really enjoy working with Celine. You've got a bunch of professional people there and serious people, people that want to care, that care about the community and cared about this study. And I can say that is not the case in 100% of our experiments.
I also want to shout out for Elle because she was very easy to work with. She always got us the information we needed, and she may not be here, but it was very, very helpful to have her get whatever we needed to get done. So we appreciate the job.
That's good news to hear that. We were glad that our staff could participate like this and be able to do that. As you mentioned, some of the aspects, you know, we're looking at disparity in equity adjustments and so forth. From our perspective, I'm thinking, and the way I've seen it in the past, we've tried to implement some of those type of ideas over a three- or five-year period to achieve, which seems to be what you were indicating, because in some cases, we may be able to quickly adjust it depending on how far out of ratio they are, but in the other ones will require a time constraint in that in terms of our budget. So I'm glad to see that you were able to show us how that plays out. The other one, just for, I guess, my last understanding, it's difficult to adapt a lead, match, or a lag approach. And I know we probably have a lag approach partially because of budget constraints and so forth in our one section. Did you see anywhere, I think maybe you've answered this question already, where the worst situation where we think we need, need to concentrate on equity is the rec department, as you indicated on your, your review?
Uh, there is a.
No.
There, no.
Nope.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
And the reason why is you expect a fair amount of turnover, and so you really want to put your money where it's going to hurt the most where you have the turnover. And I'm not sure in a seasonal position, that's where it's at.
Okay. That's helpful.
Does that make sense?
Yes. That does definitely make sense.
Good. Mr. Girba?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Seo, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, this study only relates to our staff people, not the unionized, you can write, and non-contract people.
Uh, there is information there about your unions, but we didn't, we didn't take it to the next level. We did a compensation analysis going with a moot, a moot point with the union, with the contract in place, but we did a survey.
All right. Now, here's a very general question. Looking at what you've seen, how far out of whack are we with where we should be according to kind of analysis you've done?
With, in general, or with the, the unions in particular?
In general, no, in general, but non-union.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say you're out of whack. I think you're just lagging a little bit, and I think with the proper strategies employed, I think your retention and your recruiting are, are going to be just fine going into the future. I wouldn't, I wouldn't sound the alarm though.
Do you think?
I don't, I don't think you're that, I, I wouldn't use the word out of whack.
Okay. Now, you may have stated this before, but if you did, I didn't catch it. How strong do you think our job descriptions are? Do you think they're well-constructed for every position they represent?
At this point, yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Seo. Councilwoman Mitchell, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to mention that I, I spoke with some members of Sage earlier today to just clarify some of the steps we'd be following. And I guess I'd like to repeat a question, Heidi, if I could. So I had asked during, during our time, is, is there any trend that you see as far as gender, a gender gap?
Yes. And so where we see is, in the, there is a bit of a gap in the individuals who are tenured between 10 and 15 years. And that gap, what I see is, every year that you perpetuate something like that, it grows bigger and bigger. And so that would be the area that we would want to concentrate on.
So if you have your booklet in front of you, it would be page 146.
I think that's one of my post-its.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah. There it is. Okay.
It was a new post-it because it was one of those graphs where you're like.
Yeah, yeah.
And so if you can see in that, that orange oval there, you, you can see where we've got a, a nice little gap right there. And that's going to grow bigger and bigger every year if this category isn't looked at. But it's a deep dive that's necessary because, again, for the same reason that somebody might be off on that comp ratio, there might be a reason, like the person might not have been in that job long, like they might have been promoted, they might have spent three years as an intern, that'd be a long intern, I was one of those, and then became a, you know, a real employee or something like that. So we'd want to do a deep dive into what's causing that, and if there is no logical reason, then that's an area where you really want to focus on from an overall equity standpoint. And what I see is, is I don't see a lot of trends. There's a small blip, you can see it in the category of two to five years, but it balances itself out a little bit as time goes on, so I think that variance will smooth out.
There she goes. I guess she's trying to go back to the beginning.
Yeah.
So that's right. So the, if you look at the top, the top chart versus the bottom chart.
Uh huh.
Uh, the, the top chart calculates information based on individual positions.
Okay.
The bottom chart lends those positions based on the grades that they landed. And why we highlighted and why there's an oval right there is we saw a bit of consistency with a gap from position and the grade, which is why we want to take a little bit of a deeper dive specifically into that.
So in other words, no matter how you look at it, responsibility versus pay or title versus pay, it's coming out somewhat the same.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's an area, that is, is one that we would not want to ignore.
Right.
So that's, that is, in my opinion, a, a deeper dive area. And then a correction. If there's no reason that we can see, you know, I was an intern for years and then I got promoted or something like that, I would change it. And if you don't, if you don't take a look at that, that's going to grow exponentially in time.
Uh huh.
You can see a comparison on the, on the facing page, page 145, where the analysis was done in, in regards to age versus sex. And again, you have that 10 to 15, uh, tenured employee. We look at things individually as a position. We saw a little gap. It smoothed out a little nicer when we went in together, but while we're opening the hood and looking at the 10 to 15-year people, we'll take a look at everything.
Sure.
Because that, that tends to be, you know, a little bit of the sin of the past, that sort of staying with you.
Uh huh.
So we'll want to look at that. And this is why developing, this is why what you're doing here, developing this is so important. And that's why you want to always keep record of if you're going to put value, a dollar value on education or experience or certification, you want to write it down and you want to save that so you can always justify differences in wage, because it's okay to add them so long as they're justified.
Right.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Mitchell, you've actually reached the end of your five minutes, so I do have to move on. My apologies. Thank you for your questions. Uh, Councilwoman Dylan, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to start by just saying, you answered a lot of my questions in the first five minutes and outlined any next steps, because that's where I was trying to figure out, what do we do with all this data now? But one of the questions I do still have is, what is the shelf life of this data? Is it perpetual? Is it going to be, I mean, how, what exactly are we going to do with it in five years?
It's an excellent question. And the shelf life of a lot of the work that you did, that has been done so far in looking at the grades and things like that, usually lasts quite a long time unless you add positions. And then you've got to figure out where they're all in grade. Job descriptions, unless you change duties, they'll last for a very long time. So what tends to fall out of, out of the zone, if you will, is the actual wage data itself. But to get to the wage data, you need to do that comp analysis, which is already done. You need to grade the positions, already done. So a quick salary survey, and I recommend it up, like sort of a tune-up, if you will, at least annually, so you know, or at least upon any major hire that you're going to do, is kind of important because wages, like right now, wages are super high because of the stories of labor. With all of these jobs going away with COVID, I see wages starting to fall. So next year, you, you might not, you might not be lagging anymore.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
Um, and so depending on really how this whole COVID thing falls out in the next year or so, and depending on, to be honest with you, the election, right? You have an election year, so things will change there, too, will be what the wages will look like in another year or so. So a tune-up every year is what I recommend for the wage piece of it, but you don't really have to do the rest.
Okay. I appreciate that information. Thank you. Now, I, just for my own clarification, the compensation that you're referencing, that is just systemic yearly increases, correct? That's not performance-based?
It could be both. We do recommend a performance-based system, to be honest, and that's just an additional tweak onto what we showed you today. And so you get your job script, you get your performance reviews approved and understood, and it would just be a, a two-part component where you would line up where they're at in the comp ratio, with where they fall in the performance. And we actually stole an example of that for you on page, for searching quickly for it.
Oh, page 143.
So 143 is an example of where you would actually use a, a performance evaluation scale along with the comp ratio. And you line the two up, and that would give them. I like that. That is my favorite because your superstars get rewarded for being a superstar.
Right. And, and I think that's where I was, where I was going to leave with this, is that I want to make sure that those people that are putting forth that extra effort are being acknowledged for it. Um, I think that's very important for employee morale. Um, I, I'm not, I've never been a fan of across-the-board, you know, wage.
Nor am I. And, you know, and you can still stay in a 3% budget or 2%, whatever it is, and really give somebody a 6% raise, because over on the other side, if you're not performing, you might not get a raise at all.
Right.
Or you might get 1%. That allows, and that allows for better engagement, because you can really have that dialogue with that employee, is if they didn't get the raise they wanted, what can you do together next year, right? Or this is, I want to reward you for all that effort that you put in, and here's, here's that reward. So there's a lot of value in it, and you'll see, like I said, on page 143, we actually proposed that.
Okay. That's, that's good to know. My, one of the big concerns that I've had over the years is the union versus non-union employees and finding some sort of fair ground to make sure that what the union employees are getting matches over. So I guess my thing is, how do we find that balance? Because obviously, the unions were negotiating out those contracts, and we've got various unions. And sometimes there's things about them that don't necessarily translate over.
Right.
The non-union of people. So how do you find that compensation balance?
Yeah. So a couple of ways is, we did a, we actually looked at core contracts relative to others, and you may or may not use that data to support kind of your next level of negotiation. So you'll have a lot of data that helps you to know where you stand relative from a union standpoint. And then the next is, I'm going to be honest with you, I have always subscribed to a take a look at what the unions are getting, and then judge your, your overall budget slightly above that, because there's a value of being a union member that you don't always get and not even, like, you'll work more hours, you might not get all the, you might not get overtime for it, you will, you might get a little bit of, you might have to have some extra tasks put on you to where you won't get additional compensation for. So I'm always careful to make certain that there is that balance, and usually, sometimes you have to do it in the wake. So if a union's going to get a 2% across the board, you might try to set your... So if the union's going to get a 2% across the board, you might try to set your, your, um, non-union at, you know, 2.5% because of some of the other things that are set aside from the union.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Dillon, I apologize for cutting you off. I do need to move on. We're running very short on time. Uh, Councilmember Kamara Sulek, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, well, first I want to say thank you, Heidi, Chair, and Sean. When we, when we spoke earlier, you, you cleared several things up and my colleagues also covered most of the salient points here. Uh, I do want to just touch on a couple of things really quick is bridging between this analysis and this data, which is all really good, and getting it to implementing it, which I understand is, is our, is our job as council. And I'm really a proponent of a performance-based, as was discussed for morale, longevity, uh, performance, and being rewarded for going above and beyond and staying with the city, maybe going in, getting more qualifications, certifications, a master's, and bringing more to the, more to the city. The last thing is while we have the disparity for the gender gap is we have a lack of diversity in the city. And we don't have any data to really deal with. Goal there, but recommendation is that you would have to use this to help our diversity and help attract a broader base of individuals and talent to the city. So is that something you can touch on?
And I, I'm not sure that we can, that we're going to achieve that necessarily in the wage plan. But what we, a way that you can do that is this, one of the key areas, like I heard it loudly and clear in the last meeting, City Council meeting, is we can broaden your scope of, um, advertising and letting people know positions that are available. And we can really seek out resources that pull in a more diverse candidate pool. And with that, and a fair and consistent wage plan, and the knowledge that you are very consistent in your wage plan, I think you can pull in a much broader group than having a more diverse workforce. I really believe it's all in, we've got to, we've got to broaden the surface of it. And go pull in. I'm proud of you.
All right. Uh, that sounds good. I know we're, we're short on time and I appreciate, I appreciate all the information and the extra time that you spent with us on this. And I'm, I'm sure we'll move on to, uh, course 102 or 103 in a few years.
Yes. Yeah. Fun stuff, right? We like it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kamara Sulek. Uh, ladies and gentlemen from Sage, we appreciate your time this evening. Thank you for this comprehensive report. Uh, as I indicated in my opening remarks, I was cognizant of the fact that we were just going to skim the surface this evening, so we will have additional discussions with you. Um, and you should expect our interim city manager to be in touch with you sometime this week to schedule another, uh, opportunity for you to present and address questions and concerns from City Council. But again, we do appreciate your time and more importantly, appreciate your work on this important and timely analysis. Thank you very much. Uh, referring back to the agenda this evening, the chair would entertain a motion at this time to adjourn this work meeting at 7:03 PM.
So moved?
Moved by Mayor Protem Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll let Delora Coe be the second on that. Uh, all those in favor of adjourning at 7:03 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Give us 30 seconds and we'll convene into regular session. Rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Our flag is actually on the opposite side of the room now. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I would ask the city clerk to please call the roll, including council members and staff members.
Mayor Protem Girba?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Dillon?
Here.
Councilmember Delora Coe?
Here.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Here.
Mayor Marl?
Present.
Interim City Manager, Green?
I think he's muted.
Present.
Uh, and, uh, Ways Water Treatment Plant Superintendent, Mo Wodowski?
Here.
Did you treasure a minute?
She's muted.
Police Chief Hart?
Here.
Parks and Rec Director, Stewart?
Okay, a quorum is present. You have a slightly revised agenda in front of you. I think it was revised on either Thursday or Friday. Uh, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are additional amendments.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by Mayor Protem Girba to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to citizen comments. I will note for the public's benefit, we do have a number of people in council chambers with us and I'm sure a number of people who are viewing us online. You can also watch us via live stream on Facebook. I would encourage people who are in the audience this evening to engage in social distancing and please keep a mask on unless you are presenting or talking. And we're going to try our best to limit the, the number of people in this room to as close as 10 as possible. I think that will be easy once we conclude with our presentations this evening. So you will be able to, uh, submit comments and questions via Zoom under the chat icon. You may also speak now during this first public comment period on agenda items. So under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Let's begin with the folks in the audience this evening. Is there anyone who would like to speak to a enumerated action item or an item that is listed under the discussion portion of tonight's agenda? No? Okay. Uh... Yes. Yes, please. You have three minutes.
This would be 20-97. I just found out that what they're thinking about the city at this point is having, uh, South and North Ann Arbor Street closed indefinitely for businesses. I have questions because I know if this in fact happens, all the traffic and trucks will then be pushed onto residential streets. And I also wonder as far as the delivery trucks that are for Max's and Brecken and also Dan's, they normally do the north and south Ann Arbor Streets for their deliveries. In fact, I know sometimes they park where you're supposed to go straight. Uh, if you're going Celine Ann Arbor Road and there's a truck there, so you have to kind of go into the left-hand turn lane and turn around. And I'm wondering how that would be handled. Uh, another thing is, you know, the taxpayers do the parking lots. We clean the parking lots. We provide the parking lots at taxpayers and also repair and replace. And I think that it's important for people to say indefinitely. When we did the last three weekends of closing, that's one thing. But to indefinitely close something, uh, I was wondering if the, the chief of police, who is our traffic officer, has had input on this or anyone else as far as city staff. To move it tonight without the public having any idea up until when I came to see the agenda on Monday, on Sunday, I'm sorry, uh, they had no idea this was happening. And I do feel when it says indefinitely, that could be forever. And Act 51 monies, I think, goes to certain streets like trunk lines or whatever. I have no, I'm quite ignorant on that, other than I think it does carry. Uh, I know those streets have to be prepared much more severely and worth more money than your residential streets. This definitely will impact residential streets. And to see strike trucks going down the streets again within the city residential areas, I think is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Huster. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? And again, I'll call on people, or call on those in the audience if they would like to speak. Excuse me. So anyone who'd like to provide public comment this evening? The record will reflect there are no additional public comments. Uh, Clerk Royal, were there any questions received in advance of this, tonight's meeting via, um, Facebook or email?
No, but I do have one from the Zoom chat.
Okay, please. Please read it at this time.
Um, Jen Harmout from 222 Monroe Street. She was asking, what is the matrix that is gauging the success for the revitalization of Celine Ann Arbor shutdown? How are we calculating breakeven for shutdown?
Very good. Thank you for that comment. Are there additional comments or questions on agenda items? If there are, you may type them in on the, under the chat icon that appears at the bottom of your screen. And we do appreciate the questions and comments reference to downtown recovery zone and those will be addressed as part of our discussion and deliberation under new business item 20-97. Okay, the record will reflect there are no additional citizen comments. Then we'll proceed to the presentation portion of tonight's agenda. First up, we have introductions of police employees. And I believe there are three introductions tonight. Chief, uh, one retiree, a recent retiree, and then two, uh, new hires. So the floor is yours.
Mayor, did you want to do the retiree first through the proclamation?
Why don't we do that first? Yeah. Uh, Terry and, uh, excuse me, Dispatcher Seams and his lovely wife, former Sergeant, uh, Seams are both here. If you'd like to come forward. Terry, why don't you stand there and I'm going to read this to you and then I'll present it to you. But my office was pleased to prepare a certificate of recognition, um, subsequent to your, your retirement. And so, uh, actually, I'll, I should, I failed to, failed to acknowledge. The chief assisted the clerk's office and my office in writing this. And I'm going to read it in its entirety. Whereas Terry Seams has dedicated his life work to public service, devoting 44 years to the citizens of Celine, Ann Arbor, and Chelsea. And whereas he began his, uh, career in public service as a contract security officer for the University of Michigan campus in 1976 and served as captain until the University of Michigan formed their own public safety department, wherein he served as a public safety officer. And through, uh, through his desire to provide the best possible service to his community, Terry continued to serve as a captain with the University of Michigan Police before retiring in 2009. And where he began working with the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office in the civil court services. And whereas Terry furthered his devotion to public service when he joined the city of Celine as a part-time officer with the Celine Police Department and later transitioned to a full-time dispatcher in 2014. And whereas the city of Celine has benefited greatly from Terry's performance of his duties and responsibilities within the Celine Police Department and has earned the respect and admiration of those with whom he has come in contact with. And whereas Terry Seams has taken a leap of faith and decided to, it's time for a change after a long and distinguished career in public service and therefore will retire, has retired from the Celine Police Department effective July 10, 2020. Now therefore, I, Brian DiMaro, mayor of the city of Celine, on behalf of Celine City Council and the citizens of Celine, do hereby thank Terry Seams for his dedicated service to the Celine community and commend Terry for his outstanding commitment during his tenure as a police officer and dispatcher with sincerest best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. And I set my hand and seal to this document on the 20th day of July, 2020. Terry, congratulations. Let's, uh, give him a round of applause.
Congratulations. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Good to see you again. You doing well?
You want to say a few words?
I just want to thank the, the city of Celine, not only the administration here, but the, the entire supporting community. Nowhere else have I seen the support that police officers get here.
Thank you again. Floor is yours, Chief.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I'm pleased to, uh, bring before you two outstanding police officers this evening for swearing in. Uh, the first, uh, person is Officer Morgan Seija. She's a native of Monroe County, Michigan. She earned her a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice at the University of Toledo. She then attended the Wayne County Regional Police Academy at Schoolcraft College before being hired by the city of Monroe as a police officer. Morgan started her career at the Celine Police Department on May 18th, which was quite a few weeks ago. We're hoping tonight was going to be our first meeting, that, uh, we can quote, get in, get back to normal. Uh, but we kind of have this blended meeting, so we're going to be a little bit briefer tonight. But, uh, Morgan's been involved in cheer since she was four years old and she brings a lot of excitement, enthusiasm to the police department and it's just been infectious, uh, around our agency. She's nearing the end of her training program and will qualify for solo patrol in the coming weeks. So please join me in welcoming Morgan Seija. So, uh, normally we would have Clerk Royal come in and administer the oath of office to Morgan. She's already done that, as well as Deputy Chief Radzik, who will come in shortly. So we're going to administer the law enforcement oath of honor and then afterwards, your sister is going to pin your badge on you, correct?
Sounds good.
All right. Raise your right hand, gentlemen. On my honor...
On my honor...
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity...
My integrity.
My character...
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage...
I will always have the courage...
To hold myself...
To hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution...
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community...
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Very good. Come on up. Very good. You want to quickly introduce your family?
Yes. So the female that just pinned me is my older sister. She is amazing. That is her husband over there, Casey, and my first niece, Rowan. She's seven months today. And then I have my stepmom, Beth, over here, my stepdad, Kyle. I have my brother, David, my mother, Monica, stepdad, Brian, behind her, my grandmother, Cindy, and then another stepmom, Kelly, over here on the side.
Thank you all for joining.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
Thank you as well.
Thanks for indulging us this evening. I know we have a busy agenda. All right. Again, Mayor and, uh, Council, thank you for, uh, this opportunity to bring forward another new employee. This is Marlene Radzik. She's our deputy chief of police. She was sworn in earlier today by Clerk Royal. Marlene is a native of Flint, Michigan. She began her esteemed law enforcement career at the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Correction Division in 1989. She quickly decided she wanted to be a police officer and attended the Washtenaw Community College Police Academy in 1991. She worked various assignments in road patrol until her first promotion in 2007 to sergeant, lieutenant in 2013, and commander of police services in 2014. Marlene has a stellar reputation in the law enforcement and procedural justice circles, which is evident in her five meritorious service awards, four unit citations, one Medal of Valor, and one sheriff's citation from the sheriff's department. Marlene and her husband, Michael, who is also retired, retired lieutenant from the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, raised a blooded family of six girls here in the city of Celine. Shortly after retiring from the sheriff's office in December of 2018, um, Marlene felt that she just had a lot of unfinished business and went back to work, uh, for the sheriff's department on a part-time basis. Um, Marlene just completely impressed the hiring board. The cream definitely rose to the top during her interview. She's a fantastic individual. She has a great career. And today was her first day as deputy chief of police here, uh, in the city of Celine. And I can tell she's going to have an absolutely stellar career here, uh, at our police department. So please join me in welcoming our newest deputy chief of police, Marlene Radzik. So go ahead and raise your... So go ahead and raise your right hand. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Very good. And your husband, Michael, is gonna come up?
Actually.
Oh, all right. Sherry is gonna come up. And Sherry is the former Chief Deputy at the Washtenaw County Sheriff's. And.
Ann Arbor.
And Ann Arbor Police Department. So go ahead and, we're still waiting for, Marlene's so new and the process just ended. We're still waiting for her uniforms to come in, so.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourself? Do you have some family members here with Marlene?
Oh, yes, of course, Sherry was my friend, his retired sergeant from Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, Steve Arndt, his wife Andrea, and my husband, Michael, and my daughter, Gabriella.
Very good. Let's give her another round of applause. Some of my council colleagues will recall, this is an interesting story. I like it, that Marlene, in her previous capacity as police, Commander of Police Services at the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, actually served on the oral boards and the Hiring Committee for Chief Hart. So just an interesting fact, but as the chief indicated, she's had a long and stellar career in law enforcement, universally known and respected in the Washtenaw County law enforcement community. We're delighted to have you and look forward to working with you. Thanks for being here this evening, Marlene. Yep. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just one last thing, an update to council and the community. Deputy Chief Radzik and I did visit the Washtenaw Police Academy today, and for the very first time, we have sponsored a recruit in that academy, Brian Wright. He's doing a fantastic job. I just got off the phone with him a few minutes ago. He said to say thank you for the opportunity to become a Celine Police Officer and for sponsoring him in the academy. He's very excited.
Good. And remind us that, assuming he, he completes the academy, he would begin as an officer this fall?
November 20th.
Very good.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Okay, moving on on tonight's agenda, our second presentation is an Eagle Scout presentation from CJ Robison, and I believe he is participating remotely. Parks Director Scruggs, would you like to introduce our guest?
I would, thank you very much. I am pleased to present Eagle Scout candidate CJ Robison here from Troop 416. He's gonna be presenting his project idea that was very well received by the Park Commission and really recommended for approval by Celine City Council. Although now for their due, I'll send it over to CJ.
Very good. CJ, we welcome you here this evening. Thank you for being with us. Whenever you're prepared, the floor is yours.
All right, thanks for having me. Let me just share my screen real quick.
We can see you.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'll begin then. All right, hello, my name is CJ Robison. I'm a live scout, hoping to do my Eagle Scout project, which I will present to you. So this is the Celine Rec Center Garden Expansor Project. So the overview is we're gonna replace the two deteriorated planter boxes at the Celine Rec Center, and then add two additional ones on top of replacing them, and then also replace and move the old compost bin. So what I would like to achieve in this meeting is getting approval to move forward. So this is the current butterfly garden at the Celine Rec Center. Here's the rec center over here, and then the tennis courts. And then these are the two existing planter boxes and the existing compost. Here's a picture showing how deteriorated the compost is looking and the planter boxes are looking. So we've replaced these and this and make it look much nicer. So this is what we're going for. So we're gonna add two planter boxes, one on each side, and then replace the two central ones, and then remove this compost and move it back over here. Here is a draft that I made, detailed, showing what I would like to get at and where everything would go. So the new planter boxes would be next to the older ones, and then the compost would be moved from the center back to over here, so it's not the centerpiece of the flower garden. So here is another picture showing where the compost would be moved to and where the new planter box would be. And then this is the other side, where the new planter box would be, and then the brick pavers would be going to the end of the planter box over here along the sidewalk. And then the same on this side with the, the brick pavers going along the sidewalk and in front of the new planter box. And then this is a good picture showing how the, the old compost is kind of like the center of the garden, and we'd move it back here, and I think that I would make it look more aesthetic and nice. This is my idea for the, the compost, the new compost. It has slots for aeration and a big gap on the bottom so that you can remove dirt and use them in the planter boxes. And then, so I'm gonna move on to materials now. There are three main woods that we could use for the new planter boxes, which are cedarwood, pressure-treated pine, and Douglas fir. The advantages of the cedarwood is that it's not pressure-treated and it's rock resistant, but it's much more expensive. At $30 for any plank. The pressure-treated wood would be pressure-treated pine, and the downside to this one is that the, the pressure-treated chemicals are very bad and can leak into the soil. And then Douglas fir, it's not pressure-treated, which is good, and it's more rock resistant than pine, and it's cheaper than cedar, around $10 for AP. And I think we'll be going with this option, just for the combination of the rock resistant and the cheaper cost. And then for the new brick pavers, we'll call Fent and ask for their leftovers, if we can get a discount, like extreme discount on their leftovers. If we can't, then we will go to Home Depot or back to Fent and match the old bricks and buy new ones. So for the construction, we will be building the planter boxes first at my house with the tools that I have, and then this can be done in two or three days at my house. And then we will build the compost in at my house as well in another weekend. And then after we build those, we can move on to installing. So here is my timeline that I would like to follow. So over the summer, in the future, for foreseeable few weeks, I'd like to start building the planter boxes and, and the compost bin. And then towards the end of summer, and it's fall, we can get rid of the old ones and start adding the bricks, digging and adding the sanding gravel for the bricks. And then once we have the bricks all laid, we can start to insert the planter boxes and compost bin into the flower garden. And then, so funding, I already have $450 raised through Boy Scouts. I'll be accepting donations as well as pop cans and bottle returns, and without any discounts or donations from companies, the, the total cost will be around $1,500. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you, CJ. That was an excellent presentation. So here's how this is gonna work this evening. We'll, we'll begin, when we reach, or when we come to each agenda item, we'll begin with questions, comments from the dais. I won't call on you individually, Mr. Delorko and Mayor Protim Gearbuck, and simply raise their hands. Once we've exhausted questions and comments from the dais, we'll transition to those who are participating remotely. We'll go in the same order as earlier, which is CO, Dylan Mitchell, and Kamara Sulek. So do we have any questions either for our guest, CJ Robison, or for Parks Director Scruggs, starting at the dais? Mr. Delorko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pretty straightforward project. I think it's a worthwhile effort. That area certainly looks like it's in need of improvement, and I think this is a great opportunity for, for this young man, and I support it. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, just I appreciate your support for doing this, and also moving that compost to the back appears to be a better solution than having it right in the front on the path, so good job on that.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember CO, any questions or comments?
Congratulations to Mr. Robison for continuing to move up the scouting organization. I think it's all wonderful. Thank you for doing it.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say thank you as well. I'm very excited to see this project come about. I think you've done an excellent job in your preparation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dylan.
Thank you. CJ, great job doing your presentation. As a member of the Park Commission, I've already seen this presentation. I was impressed with it before. I'm really excited for it. I think it's gonna add to the back property of the rec center. I do have one question for you, CJ. If individuals wanted to make donations, how would they get in touch with you?
I think I'll be.
Does Ms. Routh have your information?
What?
Does Ms. Routh have your information?
Yes, she does.
Okay.
Yeah, email would be a good way to get in touch with me.
Okay. And I don't know if you want to give it out over this, or if you want people to just go through the scroll to get that. It's up to you.
If anybody wants to write down my email, it's robisonc2004@gmail.com. So if anybody wants to write that down.
Very good.
Appreciate it. Especially like cans, that's probably the easiest way to make a donation.
Awesome. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any questions or cons?
Yeah, a couple comments. I, CJ, applaud your ambitious Eagle Scout project. It looks like it's, you're gonna well exceed the $100. And I would, I would happily get bags of cans, and I think it's a very worthwhile project and help with the funding. Just a couple thoughts, maybe have you approached Chelsea Lumber or landscaping companies, and they have wood or bricks or other materials to donate?
I know Chelsea Lumber has a 15% discount for Eagle Scouts, so I'll probably be using that.
Okay, great. And I look, I look forward to the project moving forward, and again, great project. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. CJ, again, we appreciate your time and your initiative on this, and hang tight. Hopefully, your project will be approved in just a moment when we review and subsequently approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Director Scruggs, is there anything you'd like to add on that?
No, I don't. I think CJ, you did an excellent job, and we're very excited about this project.
Very good. Thank you very much. That concludes the presentations this evening, so we proceed now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. I'll move to approve the consent agenda as submitted, noting that resolution or business item C-20-112, resolution declaring racism as a public health pandemic, assuming that that passes, I'll read it for the public's benefit at the conclusion of tonight's meeting during the discussion portion of our agenda. So Marl moves to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protim Gearbuck. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 20-97. This is downtown business recovery zone. Let's begin with a motion to simply acknowledge receipt of the July 15, 2020, letter from Celine Main Street and letters from downtown businesses. Moved by Mayor Protim Gearbuck to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Delorko. We do have our Chamber Director, our Main Street Director with us this evening. I'll turn to you in just a moment, ladies. We also have a number of prominent business folks in the audience this evening. Intrum City Manager Green, did you want to begin by making a comment this evening?
Yeah, just to be real brief, Holly was nice enough to write this up for me while I was on vacation, so that way I don't remember from me in here. But I was able to meet with Holly, some other Celine Main Street folks in the downtown businesses on Tuesday of last week, and they discussed their want for this change to the project. And I thought we included a bunch of letters of support in here, just so you could see that we have discussed this with many of the members. But I think if the best course of action right now is just to open it up for questions and turn over to Celine Main Street.
Very good. Holly Andrews from Celine Main Street and Jackie Hardy from Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. I know worked with a number of downtown businesses on this. Ladies, would either of you care to make a comment this evening? Please. Yep. Please come to the podium, and then Holly, at the conclusion of your remarks, if you want to hang tight, because I'm betting there's gonna be some questions that are most aptly addressed by you.
Can I close this or set it down or? Okay.
Unfortunately, it's gotta stay up.
So, can you hear me? Hi, everybody.
And you can, you can pull your mask down for this, Heidi, or for Heidi.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you all. Holly Andrews, Director of Celine Main Street. I'm gonna try to go through this in a very organized way. I want to also address some of the questions that Mary Hess presented at the very beginning. As you know, we are in support of the businesses and creating a recovery zone that's going to help everybody on the south side, as well as the north side. To begin, the north side does not want to change their current setup for Fridays and Saturdays, closing at Friday at 2:30 in the afternoon and going through Saturday evening. At this point, we are currently looking at how that's working for the south, or the north side, and it's not perfect, but I want to work with the businesses on the north side, namely Bill the Barber and the, his workers in his place, as well as the Cheese Shop of Celine and Enchanted Oven, to support them as much as possible in their need for turnover and parking, as well as visibility when the streets are shut down. The reopen plan that I was, I tried to put together after speaking with the following people. I went around and I did interviews with, on the south, South Ann Arbor side, Paul Garagosian, Walter McNeil, Ron Scofield, Karen Carrigan, Phil Tolliver, Andrew Redder, and Warren Bowen, all of them from Smokehouse 52, Marty Flint from Excalibur Barber, and Karen Hodgson from Cobblestone Rose. After, and then also on the north side, Bill Stolberg, who's here, Amber Wardia from Enchanted Oven, John Loomis Cheese Shop of Celine, Joy Ely, Pineapple House, Dan Colander from Dan's Downtown Tavern. And I have spoken to Jennifer throughout, but not on this particular issue because our paths didn't cross, and there is no change at this time for the north Ann Arbor side. So that, again, closing on Friday at 2:30 and staying closed until Saturday evening at this point. In terms of the south side, there are some things that need to happen with that plan. First and foremost, we need parking for curbside service. We are proposing that there is no long-term parking on the street at the four corners along both sides of Michigan Avenue. I spoke with MDOT, and they said we do not need a permit, that we can designate the parking along Michigan Avenue for curbside, short-term parking. Also, North Ann Arbor Street, parts of North Ann Arbor Street, as well as Henry Street at the intersection of Henry and South Ann Arbor Street, spaces in the west Henry Public Lot adjacent to the south Ann Arbor Street sidewalk, that number of lots to be determined. So this is parking for curbside service, which is critical. As we know, it's very important to the current restaurants that are open. Designate employee and business owner parking. We need to institute the Walk the Walk campaign, which I had proposed earlier, challenging downtown employees and residents to support visitor parking. Revisit potential public-private parking with the Citibank of Ann Arbor Churches and City Limits. Use sandwich board signs to highlight preferred parking, public parking. We want to designate areas for downtown business owner/employee parking and reserve optimum and convenient spaces as preferred parking for customers and visitors. This is to support the businesses who are currently hurting and need as much business as possible to make their bottom line and keep their employees working. We also want to update the parking map to all public lots and all-day parking to rename them now for wayfinding. North Ann Arbor. North Ann Arbor Public Lot, East Henry Parking Lot, West Henry Parking Lot, Water Tower Lot, and West McKay Parking Lot, those that are designated for all-day parking and those that are optimum for visitors. Regular outdoor use, south Ann Arbor Street, the proposed change, close south Ann Arbor Street from Michigan Avenue to Henry Street effective immediately, and yes, may I describe and define extended indefinitely. That is not forever. That is just while we are in the recovery zone, and I understand and appreciate your concern, Mary Hess. But we do have to engage as a city in a recovery for these businesses. It is critical. The purpose for this extension is to create outdoor seating and open-air marketplace in order to maximize square footage for dining over a longer period of time, thereby minimizing weather and climate impacts on potential patronage. Allows street parking on south Ann Arbor up to Excalibur Barber daily until 2:00 p.m. with turnaround allowed at the driveway adjacent to Cobblestone Rose. So, again, I do not want the barricades to go all the way to the end of south Ann Arbor to Henry Street. We need to bring them up a little bit closer. There's a dead zone that's created there, and I request that that is brought up closer so that the parking in front of Excalibur and Cobblestone Rose can continue. I spoke with the DPW. We can put no outlet, a sign that says no outlet at the front of that, and use signage to show where you can park. This is critical for Marty Flint and some of his seniors who need to come and get their haircut and who are important customers to him. We can't leave him out of this mix, and we don't need to. All right. Signage is required, and all of this is subject to change upon review. And yes, answer to the person, I have a full plan for metrics and measuring who's coming, where they're going, what they're doing, how many people are there, and working with the businesses to find out how their bottom lines are affected, in particular, the barbers and the people who are not restaurants. Both sides, I want to move the barricades up on Saturday mornings so that the barbers can have parking out front, and I believe that we can do this. Signage needs, curbside parking signage, we need help with that. I don't have a huge budget. I'm barely getting by with our organization as it is. If there is some money somewhere to help us create wayfinding signage, that's important. Parking lot wayfinding for visitors, that's important. Mask up and social distance and keep your workers and each other safe, no matter what your beliefs or your politics are. We are all not going to see any outbreaks happen in downtown Celine. And the others, I want to allow for shade treatments, hand sanitizing stations, and cooling stations. Now, you guys know I'm really passionate about this, and you can probably hear it in my voice, but we've wasted a ton of time. Let's get it done, and let's work together. And some of us are going to have to give up some stuff, and we're going to have to work together and figure that out. But we will overlap, and we'll make this happen, and we will recover, and we will get through this.
Thank you. Jackie, do you care to make any additional comments this evening?
Holly, I need more.
Very good. And most of the business owners and property owners who are present this evening, I believe almost all of you submitted letters or comments. Anybody, gentlemen, anybody care to make any additional comments this evening? No? Okay, all right.
Can I say really quickly?
Please.
This is an opportunity for us to do something really creative, and it's, Open Streets Plan is something that other cities have pursued before recovery, so let's do something fun with this. We can make it safe, we can make it interesting, and we can make Celine a destination during the recovery so that these guys can make some money. So, I'm excited to do that. I've got the Celine Youth Council, the Summerfest.org people, the organizers for Summerfest, our volunteers, the chambers on board, Celine leadership people. We can really do this together as a community. Let's have some fun. Let's be bold. Let's not... Let's get it done. Thank you.
Very good. Hang tight, because there might be some questions that are best addressed by you, Holly. Again, we'll start with those folks at the dais and then transition to those who are participating remotely. Councilmember Del Orco, questions for our Main Street manager, city staff, or any of our guests?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Holly, how are you?
I'm good, Jim. How are you?
Good. Thank you for your work on this. Obviously, we want to do what we can to help Celine's business owners and to help facilitate the recovery effort. I do want to ask one question related to Ms. Karen Carrigan's concerns about how this would affect her business, because I want to ensure that we're doing this in a way that ensures the benefit of all the business owners and that we're not selectively benefiting some businesses at the expense of others. So, is she satisfied with this idea of a turnaround driveway where customers can still get access to her business and then have the ability to turn themselves around and get back out that same way they came in?
Absolutely, and I believe that she does, she does describe that in her letter. It's difficult to describe, but she does describe that. She's concerned about her fellow businesses and wants to make sure that they're okay, but at the same time, she's also on the Celine Main Street Board and understands the benefit to having a recovery zone and open streets and to give it a shot.
Okay, so, I just wanted to clear that up.
I agree, and thank you for bringing her up. She's always in the room for me, so I appreciate you noticing that she's not tonight, but she is absolutely.
And then I thought I read somewhere that October 31st would be the target date to where we would reevaluate this and look at where we're going. I mean, obviously, the weather's going to get cold, and we can't maintain this indefinitely through the winter months, but...
So, one thing that people probably don't realize is how much dialogue has gone on every week, weekly, with the business owners and different people to check in and see how things are going, and that's going to continue. I think October 31st, I think Mike Green, and I'm sorry, Mike, I'm speaking for you, but you did, I think, clarify this for me. It's sort of just, it's not an end date per se as much as to sort of get us deep into the fall with having, but everything is subject to review, everything, whether we change it before then or change it after, and I think that's the reason for the word indefinitely that was requested by one of the people who proofread my plan. They don't want to be solid on any certain date. If it's working, they don't want to have to shut it down on October 31st.
I see. Okay.
The October 31st date, that's the current state statute of this recovery zone?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, thank you.
... adopt a new legislation that lets us go year-round, then we reevaluate it. October 31st dates as long as it's current.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think this is an important effort moving forward for the city and helping our business owners, and I can certainly recognize that the effort to do the tear-down and setup every weekend for the outside tables, chairs, and seating is an enormous amount of work, and it's also an opportunity where we can be putting people in proximity to one another and potentially causing problems. So, I definitely support the initiative, but I want to do, I do want to keep our finger on the pulse to see, evaluate how it's going as we move along and make sure it's working for all of our business owners.
Agreed.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh, questions or comments?
I appreciate Main Street taking a lead on this, because I think you all know what is needed and what needs to happen down there. But I do have one question regarding the Michigan Avenue dedication for pickup space, because I need to understand, did you speak with Accent Jeweler? And in full disclosure, I represent the owner of that building, Accent Jewelers, and Heidi McCrone of the photography studio, because they do not have back entrances.
Okay, so, I mean, absolutely, if they need to retain, whatever's going to help the businesses that are on Michigan Avenue, I'm not going to go against, but I guess as much as we possibly can outside of Smokehouse 52, outside of Max, outside of Dan's, if we, and Brecken, if we can use those spaces, dedicate some of those spaces for curbside. And then, again, everything is subject to change. I think the thing that's been the hardest about creating this plan from day one, which was May 18th, the first time that I presented in front of you guys, and back then, I wanted to get going, so you can imagine how antsy I am. But nothing, everything is fluid. Nothing is set in stone. We just have to keep checking in with everybody and make sure that they have what they need. I don't want to hurt those guys, for sure.
Yeah, and I think my recommendation would be is that we put signage up that would not, I mean, either limit parking to a half hour or something like that, because I don't want to see those businesses, because even across the street, Mod Squad and some of those may have that need to have somebody because they have front entrances.
Mod Squad has a back entrance off of that public lot.
Yeah, and so, just to make sure, because we do have seniors and everything that access both those properties and can't get into the back.
This is, and largely, I think, the thing about this plan that really takes into account, especially with the barber shops, is seniors. That is, seniors are never to be overlooked in my world, so, thank you.
But other than that, I think closing south Ann Arbor Street, but I would put the 1031 deadline out because it coincides with the city's, with the state's regulation.
I will make that amendment, and thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh. Councilmember CEO, any questions or comments?
Yes, Your Honor. Because the other thing, in her time, Karen Halliwell's plan to... excuse me, to Del Orco's question, about how the women, Karen Carrigan, signed on to this plan that just submitted.
Karen is, yeah, she's signed on, she's game to try anything, but she does not want Marty or Karen Hodgson's Cobblestone Rose to be left out of the mix, which is why we created, we included in the plan to push the barricade up to include, to create a space for the seating ahead of Excalibur. But here's the thing, don't forget, we have a public lot, and now we've closed the street, so people who want to go get coffee can park in the public lot right along the sidewalk, in the lot, and just walk across the street to Karen's coffee shop. And she will say over and over to you, as she says to me, "I will be okay. The coffee shop's going to be fine. Foot traffic is going to benefit her," you know? She is actually going to be benefited by this. She just wants to speak out and make sure that Marty and Cobblestone Rose have a voice, and everybody has a voice. Everybody is included in this plan.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. Can you repeat the difference women's office saying something about the channel?
Yeah, I apologize. Maybe Holly for additional remarks. Maybe if you come up to the dais and sit at the far end there.
Okay.
That might be better. Is that, you think that's correct, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Suffice it to say, she had a pretty protracted reply, Mr. CEO, but yes, Karen Carrigan has been notified, and of course, the plan would be, if adopted this evening, that they would try to create some additional on-street parking that would benefit not only Karen but Marty, Bill the Barber on the north side of Ann Arbor Street as well.
And can you hear me now? Jack, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, Karen has said to me, the coffee shop will be fine. She will be fine. She is most concerned about Marty and Karen, which is why we created that turnaround and moved the barricade up so that some of the seniors and people who need to pick up things from Cobblestone Rose or some of the older gentlemen that come to Marty can pull their cars in and park and then turn around and leave. There won't be an outlet, but they will be able to turn around and leave, and that will, I spoke with DPW, and they said that we could put that signage up and that that would work and it would be fine. But in terms of Karen, she, people, not only will they be able to, will she have a lot more foot traffic, but people can park in the public lot adjacent to south Ann Arbor Street sidewalk and cross the street without worried about getting run over the way they are now. Personally, I'm kind of excited about getting a few cars out of the downtown. It's crazy. There's, the speeds are crazy. Maybe this will help calm things and quiet it down a little bit. It'll actually feel like a downtown.
I understand. I think it's a turnaround. We need to go over a bit, but if we need to give you all the time, you do it, and give your mom, if you need to.
Absolutely. We will revisit it weekly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions or comments for Heidi or, or Heidi, Holly, or staff? Verbal tick tonight, my apologies.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think you're really so much. I really appreciate you being here, and I really appreciate you taking the time with the business owners. I do have a couple of questions. I've heard people, and I've heard citizens and the business owners say, you know, why would we close the street for Sundays and Mondays? And my assumption is, is that effort is to be consistent, so there's a safety concern. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. I live in Depot Town in Ypsilanti, and the streets are closed down all the time in Depot Town, and as a result, people have found their way there. It is super safe. They do have turnarounds there as well. They, the restaurants have music. People come down and hula-hoop there and ride their bicycles and scooters and skateboards and walk their dogs, and it's become this lively, green street, and people are shopping, and they're eating, and they're going to get their hair done, and it's just this really exciting spot that's lively. It's what Celine could be on the south side, and maybe, who knows? Maybe, who knows what will happen with the north side as well? I hope that they also, I mean, we'll just see. We're just going to take it one step at a time.
And you're talking, you know, it's always an idea aligned to close south Ann Arbor Street permanently, but then I'm thinking about the people who do need that drop-off. And I guess what I was talking more about, Holly, a fair number of businesses are closed on Sunday, but it might be confusing to have traffic some days of the week and then not traffic other days of the week. So, we're doing it all the time rather than just Tuesday to Saturday.
Sure.
Is it a safety concern? Or can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, I think you just said it, and I think consistency is really helpful. And you're saying it's for the drivers, and I agree. The drivers will learn new routes. The delivery trucks will learn new routes. They're just going to have to. I mean, everybody's doing it all over the country. Celine can do it, too.
Right, and I guess that's something I would want a little bit more information about, because right now, the only loading zone I know of is on Henry Street. It's supposed to be across from Salt. It's supposed to be on the south side. You, so if we take those two loading zones, what are the commercial trucks going to do?
There is a loading zone inside the public lot. That's what Smokehouse 52 uses, and I would imagine that the rest of them could also juggle that as well. They would also, they'll figure it out. It's, you know, they'll, these guys are going to need to get their deliveries. They'll work with them. They'll point them the right way, and they'll work it out.
Sure. Okay. I think Mr. Gearbaugh asked my question about pickup and guidelines for pickup. A half hour seems to be a little bit long for pickup. 10 minutes seems to be a little short. I don't know what your thoughts are on having guidelines or how you're going to handle that. Can you talk about that a little bit, please?
I think, right now, and I could be wrong, but when I pull up somewhere and I see that it's curbside parking, I know that I need to not be there very long. If somebody in downtown Celine chooses to park in curbside parking for longer than 15 minutes, I just hope that doesn't happen. But I think most people will figure that out. It's curbside parking, I can't be here very long.
Right. Okay. And I just have a quick question for the police chief, and then I'm done. So, I just want to give him a moment, a moment to perk up his ears.
How are you?
Are you there? Hi, Chief.
How are you?
How's it going? It's nice to see you. Thank you. So, I asked Holly a question about consistency. Why do you have residents, I've had business owners talk to me about, you know, why would we keep that street closed Saturday and Sunday? And that was my best idea. I'm assuming that you have discussed kind of those traffic safety issues. Is that, is that true? true?
So this is really the first glance that I've had an opportunity to look at this plan.
Okay.
I would say that the only reason I would say to open them up would be to give our residents some relief.
Okay.
Because South Ann Arbor is a fairly busy street. So almost immediately when it was announced that we were going to be closing Ann Arbor Street, I started getting emails from residents asking for more police presence, concerned about the additional traffic on Henry Street.
Sure.
That is clearly going to be pushed in those directions. But I think that may be a consideration for council to take is the additional traffic on our side streets. Or a roadway that in the two and a half years that I've been here has been kind of a concern that's been under the air as far as speeding. Now, one of my other issues here, and I guess if it is one with the plan, is the turnaround right there at the driveway. I must really put proper signage that road closed to US 12, open for local business only. There's going to be a lot of confused drivers in there. They may be pulling into the driveway. They may take up some parking spots in there. So it could become an enforcement issue for us. I get the reason behind it, to support a couple of businesses there that it's not uncommon for me, as I'm coming into town to pull off, park in front of Kerrigan's, run in, grab a coffee, come in, hit my vehicle, and then go to work. But I think that, I understand the idea behind that. I am concerned that we're going to get some type of bottleneck or some confusion right there.
Okay.
Three months. Three months. I think that the residents can put up with a little bit of inconvenience for three months.
Right. And then, I just want to check in, Chief. Are you enforcing parking downtown right now?
We are not. There was a decision that came out of that parking, the sixth circuit corner in Cincinnati.
Oh, right. Okay.
City Attorney, we're still not enforcing the parking at this time.
So if somebody notices a car parked longer than, you know, 15, 20 minutes, they could stay up for an hour, what do they do? Would they call the Main Street office? Would they call you? What is the protocol, if anything, when we're?
Don't call me.
Well, certainly, I'm one of the ones by statute that are allowed to enforce the traffic code. We literally have to put police officer there. And if they were to then go beyond the time limit, then you have to, they could take enforcement action.
Okay. But if people have an issue, they can call you. Have any issues been reported for the curbside signage that you did have?
I didn't have any complaints from the curbside. The only time I started feeling complaints was when the road was shut down.
Got it.
People hate change. People don't like change.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon, any questions or comments?
Thank you. Yes, I do have a few questions, please. So Holly, just for clarification, how many spaces are you talking about at the four corners? I mean, how far down? Are you talking all the way, like, listen to your mom, it said, are you talking all the way down to, like, Speedway? The entire block to the Presbyterian Church?
No, just at the four corners.
So I just, can you clarify what that means?
I can. I don't have it clear right now, but I can. I mean, what I would like to see is, we lost so many curbside parking spots when we closed the streets, so if we can recoup those.
Okay. I guess my concern is that for, like, rock paper scissors or earth elements.
I don't want to take their, I'm not going to take their parking away. But also, don't forget, the Key Bank is allowing public parking in their lot as well. And by the way, earth elements and rock paper scissors have curbside, so they need curbside parking.
Okay. My concern with the curbside parking is that we really have no method to enforce it. We can suggest it.
That would be great.
Park there all day. I don't think there's anything we can actually do about it.
Probably not.
Talking higher.
I don't, you know what, Janet, I just don't, you know, I just don't think that people are going to sit all day long in front of a sign that says "curbside only." I mean, everybody's been affected by this COVID-19. So I think people are going to honor that and know what it's there for.
And I understand that. My concern is that those individuals that have mobility issues, that logging from the back of a parking lot into a restaurant.
We're not going to take away any ADA compliant parking spots. ADA compliant parking, ADA parking spots will remain ADA parking spots, for as long as they need.
But there's only one area for the jam, so that doesn't actually have a purpose, so I'm not even sure how that qualifies as a deal. But, okay, so you have a question where, um, the turnaround, isn't that private property?
Nope, it's cities.
The city owns?
That driveway. Yep.
Okay. So then, I guess, I'm just very, very reluctant to have cars driving where there are people sitting. You get people that get confused, whether they're blinded by lights or the situation.
Have you been in Mylan and Chelsea? Have you seen the parklets without a right down on the street next to the traffic? And already, we have sidewalk seating. We have people sitting right next to traffic.
But this is in the road, Holly. This is my concern, that you have cars that are coming towards them.
There's a barricade up.
Holly, just let her ask her question, Holly. Go ahead, Janet. Floor is yours.
I'm just, I'm very reluctant about that, about that turnaround concept, because I am afraid that you get someone that's a confused driver, who, you know, for some reason goes right through a barricade, because they're just those, you know, those.
Put up some Jersey dividers. Put up some Jersey dividers, then.
Well, that's something that I would want to consider. I mean, that's, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to this. Holly, you and I have had this discussion, that I've always thought that closing South Ann Arbor Street and that lot permanently would make a great effort for how Celine could be the sort of town center. I just want to make sure that it's done in a safe way, and that we are looking through the issue. As far as, like, Kerrigan and the barber shop, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about those individuals' mobility issues, and making sure that we have points of access for them. Because if they park behind Cobblestone Rose, I don't believe that there's a ramp other than going to the end of Max to get those individuals over.
Wait, I don't, wait, I'm not sure what you're saying.
So I'm just concerned about mobility issues for people, that we're putting them further out by taking away that street parking. And if we were to close it, what provisions could we make? Because the ramp that is coming off of the lot behind Bennetts is actually in the midst of where Smokehouse has tables.
So first of all, the reason why have that barricade moved up in front of Excalibur is so that seniors can access the sidewalk there. And that is what all he's asking. And so, you know, that's for, that's for access. That's to create accessibility for seniors. It's a place where you can drop off, or pick up, or turn around. It's specifically designed for seniors and accessibility.
Mary, if you're going to interrupt, you're going to need to leave. Mary?
Okay.
I'm sorry for the interruptions, Janet.
No, that's okay. So, Holly, is there any opportunities, and I'm not saying we're on Main Street, is there state funding, or are there ramp opportunities, or are you looking to the city for this signage and handstand signs, and fueling stations and such?
Sure.
So I'm just trying to figure out what that part of it is.
You know what, Janet, here's the thing. I think the thing that's very frustrating for me is that everybody, yeah, it's great that you can look to Celine Main Street to do all this stuff. I am down 60% on our pledges, and we are not holding October fast. So I am doing the best I can to raise money for us, and raise money for the businesses, create a recovery zone, and get this up and running. And the thing I think that's frustrating to me is all these questions that keep coming to me, what ifs? We've had months. Mylan and Chelsea and Dexter have been up since the end of May. And we are still fiddling around with these what ifs. I need us to do this, and we can make these concessions to make it safe. I have never ignored public safety in any of these plans that I've put together. Nor, and the thing that kills me about Mary Hess leaving is because seniors have always been part of this plan. I have never left seniors out of this planning process, nor have I left any of the businesses or the residents. And I get that it's a three-month inconvenience, but you guys, if you end up with an empty downtown because we didn't do everything in a decisive, timely way, with the information that we've got right now, it's a lot of jobs, it's a lot of long, hard work. Like, let's get it done. We could do this. But I'm getting impatient with the what ifs, because it's, I've been doing this since May 18th, and I'm tired of getting shut down. We got to get it done. It's frustrating.
I appreciate that, and I understand that. And I think at the end, we all want to have a very successful community. And I've never questioned your concerns with public safety by any means. I'm raising concerns, and I have, I just want to voice my concerns. And, you know, there's always those, in those instances, and I'll go back to the traffic thing, where you see somebody charge through.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, some sort of barrier. And, you know, and that makes me very concerned. So I guess my other question is...
It's a terrible way to create policy. You've got to create policy for the benefits and optimism, and stop creating policy for the worst-case scenarios. Because it creates the worst-case scenarios when you do that.
So then, I guess my next question is, have the police and fire been consulted? How are they with this permanent road closure? Are they okay with it? And how does it impact the town longer?
I, you know, so initially, when I was working on the plan, I did approach Chief Hart and Chief Heft, and they said that I was no longer behind the plan, that the plan was now being worked. They were negotiating and working on it with Mike Green. And I would imagine that they worked on the street closure, and how that would work with the emergency routing and everything. But it's just, it's not going to be perfect. But we can create public safety with clear signage, and make sure that there's access, and make sure that the seniors can reach their destination. And I just, I think we can do that.
Chief Hart, do you want to respond to Councilwoman Dillon's question?
Speaking with Chief Hart, he was looking at radiuses coming off of Michigan Avenue leading to Ann Arbor Street. And he was satisfied, you know, when we originally were talking about putting seating out and then allowing traffic to come through. We've since talked. He has the ability to get his apparatus to, in any type of emergency situation, if we do close the road, he can come in from a different side of the building to, let's say, attack a fire. So I don't want to pour words into his mouth, but that was the conversation that he and I had. Of course, I'll be writing the traffic controller as the traffic engineer. So as clear and succinct as we can make it, we'll be the best as far as, you know, trying to write the traffic controller for everyone to understand. I will reiterate, I do have a concern, although I think it's a valid request to have the turnaround. You know, it's a city-owned driveway. I think that's something that we're going to have to definitely keep our eye on.
That would be great.
And my next question, Holly, I'll wrap up and yield this floor to the next person, is that, you know, traffic is like water, that always finds a way into its destination. I guess what I want to make sure is that we are taking into account where this traffic is going. Because what we're talking about now is, if you were to close South Ann Arbor, where are those trucks going to go? Is that going to interrupt them through Old Creek Neighborhood? Is it going to, you know, and then how do those people feel about it? I mean, there's a tax for everyone, and I get that. But I feel like everyone needs to have a voice at the table to understand what this might be.
Yeah, sure. It's just, it's just that we've had a long time to do that, and I think it's time to start trying.
I appreciate you saying that, but I mean, this, I believe, is the second time this has come to council. So I understand your frustration.
Actually, it's the third, because I started on May 18th, and then I came back for a vote on the resolution on June 1st, and that didn't happen. And now we're back to the planning again. And actually, Mike Green presented his plan, so this is the fourth time since May 18th, and that's why I'm getting impatient. And we need to...
It's not like retashing the same thing. The plan does keep changing. And so there are other options that are being considered. And I'm sure that we can absolutely find some sort of middle ground. I just want to make sure, and we can do it in a timely manner. It's just that there's a lot to digest in this revised plan right now. And with that, I will yield the floor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Kamara Sulek, any questions or comments for staff or our guests from Celine Main Street?
Yes, thank you. Holly, thank you for all the work you've put into this. Your passion and vision for Celine is commendable, to say the least. And I have a lot of faith in your planning and the rest of Celine Main Street. And I'm going to go along with having faith in Chief Hart and Chief Heft, that we will adapt and figure it out. And this is kind of like a living document that we can make adjustments. As long as we can make adjustments as needed, I feel that we can make this work. I care about public safety and different people being able to get to their destination. But I agree that we need to do everything we can to help our downtown businesses make it through. And it's not going to, it's going to take a bit more time. Who knows how much longer. I think we'll see people will do with the inconvenience, as long as we measure it and make sure that we can make some tweaks here and there. I think you've put a lot of time and energy, as I'm sure Jill and others at Celine Main Street have done. So most of my questions and concerns have been answered by my colleagues. So I know we can make it perfect. But I think this is a really good guide, and I feel that we should move forward, and we have to do what we can. And if additional barricades and signage is needed, I want to promote our businesses and public safety at the same time. So thank you for all your work on this. Your passion and care for the community is very... Your passion and care for the community is very commendable. Thank you for it all. And that's all that I have. I'll wrap it up and move forward. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Kamara Sulek. I appreciate that. Holly, any additional comments that you'd like to share?
Just that, yes, I am very passionate. But it is really about, I just, I want us to be decisive, and I think that we can do that as a city. And so let's do it. Let's get out of the box. And we'll be safe, and we'll spend money, and we will sustain, and we will prevail.
Very good. Thank you. Why don't you hang tight there, just in the event that there are questions on the subsequent motion? We do have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt of the July 15, 2020 letter from Celine Main Street and letters from downtown businesses. That was moved by Mayor Protem Girbaugh, seconded by Councilmember Del Orco. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion now to approve or not to approve the changes to parking, changes to parking signage and street closures as requested? It's been moved by Mitchell to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Kamara Sulek?
Yeah, it is Kamara Sulek.
Thank you. Very good. Let me just add a couple observations, Holly. One, thank you for your time, and of equal importance, thanks to the business owners and property owners in our downtown who decided to chime in on this issue. I'm glad that you're recommending that we adjust the barricades to create some additional parking, specifically for Marty and Bill the Barber on the north side of Ann Arbor Street. Because we do have a number of businesses, non-restaurant businesses, who rely on, well, whose customers rely on quick, accessible parking. To Mr. Girbaugh's point, I do think that a 30-minute time limit seems reasonable, not just for takeaways, but also for people who might want to be, who might patronize mod squad or the photography studio, accent jewelers, et cetera. I am interested in hearing back from you in maybe a two-week's time or four weeks on the closure of North Ann Arbor on Fridays and Saturdays. Because the feedback that I've gotten, one restaurateur on that side or in that section of our downtown seems to be supportive. Others are a little bit dubious of its benefits. So I'd like to closely monitor that. I don't have any serious reservations with your recommendations. You know, this is a critical and very precarious time, and we need to make an extra effort to support our local enterprises. To your point, it will save jobs, it will help ensure the vitality of our downtown for years to come. This may, this final sentiment may or may not be shared by my council colleagues. The recommendation is to have it go into effect immediately. I would rather wait until Wednesday, give people 24 hours notice so we could blast this out, disseminate it via website, social media, et cetera. But again, that sentiment may or may not be shared by my city council colleagues. So discussion on the motion that's on the floor. Mr. Del Orco.
Thank you, Mayor Marl. I think if all of us, including members of the community, can start to think about this as crisis management, we're responding to a crisis in a time that's very detrimental to our business owners, that will help us all find a way to lean in. We all need to lean in to help our local businesses. And I'm hearing a lot about the concerns over traffic. Look, I live on Henry Street. I'm going to suffer the consequence of that, but I'm willing to make that sacrifice if it helps to save our business owners and prevent folks from going out of business, prevent loss of jobs. We really need to take this seriously. And I don't think there's anything we can't adjust to that's going to present as a problem for us moving forward. If there's something that comes up that proves to be problematic, we'll find a way to work around it. Thanks.
Mr. Girbaugh, any additional thoughts?
Yeah, just a couple. One of my concerns is with the, as you mentioned about the commercial, well, commercial loading dock, as Ms. Mitchell had mentioned. It would be my recommendation that we identify two of the spots on Henry Street closest to South Ann Arbor Street for loading and unloading. Because otherwise, they're going to be parking in the fire lanes in the parking lots and blocking it. Somehow, we need to identify a specific, just like we do when we close streets for detours and whatever. That way, they know where to go, they have a place to go, and can be used for that.
If I may, Mayor Protem Girbaugh, assuming this motion passes and there's no objection from any of our colleagues, I think we can empower the police chief working with city staff to make those designations in the next 48 hours.
My hope is that, you know, also, we will increase our traffic enforcement on Henry Street to deal with that, and even on Ann Arbor Street if it becomes a concern. I'm still not sure the city owns that alley next to Marines. I need clarification on that from the city manager.
Not Marines. I think she's referring, she's referring to that parking...
I'm sorry, Cobblestone Road. I'm sorry. That's what I meant. Are you sure? We need to clarify on that because there was a whole issue when that was acquired and all that property that it still may be under Kinley, under Phoenix property.
We can clarify that, but it...
The city might have a right of way over it, but we just need to make sure on that one. And then I, just to make sure, protect it because I don't want us getting into other people's private property issues. I do want to make this a 1031 deadline because it corresponds with the recovery so that we're not issued, but try to have a date where we review this two weeks prior or whatever. And I think that's it. And then, if we can, we have committed dollars to this need, and we need to find in our budget to provide money for signage, to provide money for cleaning stations, if you mentioned, or whatever. Either it's available in the Tifa funds, or we can identify some of these within the general fund dollars.
Mayor Protem Girbaugh, and I'll jump back to Councilmember Del Orco as well. Are you good with this, assuming it passes tonight, going into effect immediately, which would mean tomorrow?
I'm fine either way, but I think maybe we need a little time to make sure everybody's well aware of this as this is happening.
So maybe you'd lean a little bit more towards maybe going into effect first thing Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Del Orco?
I'm okay with that.
Just real quick, if I need to make an amendment to make this a 1031 2020 date.
So then the motion would read, Mr. Girbaugh, to approve the changes to signage and parking as requested with, how would you like that amendment to read?
Correspond with the state's recovery zone.
To correspond with a October 31 sunset per state statute.
Correct.
That sounds good. Okay. We'll do this in a more informal way. Councilwoman Mitchell, are you comfortable with that additional verbiage to the motion?
I am. And I also want to note that if it's 1031, the council might need to sit in on the last meeting of September.
Correct. Correct. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, you seconded that motion. Are you comfortable with Mayor Protem Girbaugh's additional verbiage?
Yes, I am comfortable with that.
And Clerk Royal, did you, were you able to catch what I, between Mayor Protem Girbaugh and I articulated?
I got it to correspond with the October 31 sunset.
Yep. Per state statute.
Per state statute.
Yep. Or as enumerated in state statute would sound better. Okay. Anything else, Mr., or Mayor Protem Girbaugh? Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell, or excuse me, Councilmember CEO, any additional comments or discussion?
I'm trying to develop consensus on that. So far, Marl, Del Orco, and Girbaugh were amenable to that, but I'm curious as to your thoughts. I agree. We need to raise money for ours to notify people what's going to happen. I agree too that we need to be very attentive to what's going on down there. I have Chief Hart to give us feedback on a regular basis of that situation. So we need to make any kind of amendments to this whole thing. We can do so in a timely manner.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Councilwoman Mitchell, any additional questions or comments?
You're muted, Kristin.
Thank you for catching that.
Sorry. I appreciate that. I have no questions. I'll be supporting this motion.
Very good. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. So I guess I just want some clarification that if we're going to do this and we still have questions about the Friday turnaround and concerns about that, I don't want to make the decision in haste. I understand everyone wants to get this done. Can we just start with our Friday's plan and we move forward from there? And whether, once it's closed on Friday and we move forward, that gives, you know, a couple of businesses to get all the ducks in a row. I would like to see some sort of additional barriers for there, that it has some sort of lighting or something to it so that it is very clear that, you know, that there's no roadway to pass the road. I think that there's just a couple of things that need to be worked through. The other issue is that I think that this needs to be monitored. I disagree as to how it is working, what is working, and it needs to be recorded out at every council meeting and whether things need to be adjusted. Because we're closing the road permanently for businesses that are not even open during certain days or at lunchtime. And so, I mean, I do have some concerns about that, that, you know, are they going to increase their hours to make up for it? So I want to make sure that, I want to support our businesses, but we also have to remember the community at large also. And make sure that everybody is being served with our decisions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any additional comments or questions?
I think it's a very out point for Mr. Green to be reporting on this and really honoring it heavily as interim city manager and community development. And I have faith that he will be really close in touch with this and keep us posted. I will be supporting this measure.
Very good. So here's a few things that I jotted down. Sounds like the consensus, while not unanimous, is that this would go into effect first thing Wednesday. Holly, between you and staff, we need to have somebody report back as to the ownership of the driveway adjacent to Cobblestone Rose. And then, sounds like it's nearly unanimous that city council would like the interim city manager, Mike Green, to report out on this issue at each council meeting. And Mike, I would also ask that you provide some verbiage when appropriate in your weekly communiquee.
Sounds good, sir.
Sounds reasonable. The other thing that I'd throw out, and I mentioned this to Chief Hart last week, but I want to be very mindful and cognizant of the public safety. And so unless there are objections from city council, this is inherently operational. I'd like to empower the assistant, the interim city manager and the police chief with the power to essentially terminate this if, in fact, our COVID numbers spike and it becomes detrimental to the public's well-being and safety that these types of activities transpire. Now, we can, of course, discuss that at council meetings, but there are going to be periods where we don't meet for one and a half week. And actually, between, I think, our last meeting in August and our first meeting in September, I think it's nearly four weeks between meetings. So what are your thoughts on that?
I think it's a great idea. It's thinking forward and it's planning in case there's something that we can't count on. And obviously, it would be a public health concern if there was an outbreak. So we need to shut it down if we get a spike in numbers.
And if the governor's executive order puts in place, he has authority, I believe, to do that anyways.
Yes. Yep, okay. Mr. CEO, yes. Chief Hart?
I apologize. I spoke to Chief Heft on the phone during a brief break here a couple minutes ago. He did state his only concern with the permanent closure would be to make sure that the tables, chairs, and whatever that are put out into the roadway that would be left there can be easily moved in the event his staff had to respond to something street-side there.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember CEO, do you have any issues with empowering the interim city manager and police chief to shut this down in the event that there's a public health or public safety emergency?
I think that doesn't make sense. I agree with Mr. Girbaugh. You know, we got a big one in the executive office too.
Yep. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, your honor. My, I guess the only question is, what are we defining as a spike? And, you know, where is the cutoff? So the incident of whatever party or kids were at, that was actually in Pittsfield Township. And I don't know if that, you know, are we talking a regional spike? If there's a spike in Ann Arbor that happened in Ann Arbor to close? I guess I'd like to understand a little bit more what the parameters are. I'm fine leaving it with Chief and with acting in a degree, but I just would like some parameters found out as to how we're going to make that decision.
My assumption would be if we were contacted specific, well, two things. Obviously, to Mr. Mayor Protem Girbaugh's point, if the governor reverts back to a previous stage, we may not be permitted to have outdoor seating. So obviously, in accordance with her action, they could effectively shutter the downtown recovery zone. In addition to that, however, I would expect that they would rely on the Washtenaw County Health Department, who we have an excellent relationship with, to report numbers. And so if the data coming into the Washtenaw County Health Department was alarming for the greater Celine community, I would hope that they would appropriately assess that data and then make a subsequent decision.
Okay. So what is the greater Celine community? What is that?
I would define that as the school district.
The school district. Okay. I just wanted to know, so could CEO, the incident, could CEO, would that have been considered under this application?
Potentially, yes. That was in the school district.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Those are our questions.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon?
I have the same concern that Ms. Mitchell had, which was, you know, what are you basing that decision upon? I think that you provide some clarification as to it, and we can kind of cross that bridge. I would ask though, if that decision was to be made, that they don't have to be informed?
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any objections to that?
No, I think we, I think we're in a good place with it. I trust that we'll do the right thing depending on where things go with COVID. So I don't have any problem with it. I think this is crisis management. We've got to take it one day at a time, one weekend at a time, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Mitchell, seconded by Kamara Sulek with some additional language provided by Mayor Protem Girbaugh. Is everyone clear on the motion that's on the floor to approve? Okay, then we'll proceed to...
May I interject something, I'm sorry, before we go, just very quickly?
Quickly, please.
Yes, with Mr. Green and Chief Hart, can we also add the city's health officials to that also, to that decision process? Because I think he would be able to offer insight.
Sure. I don't have any objection to that. I'm assuming there's no objection from the dais. So, Mike, Chief Hart, that would be Dr. Singh, who I appointed as a health officer a few years ago. And if you both recall, in the early stages of the COVID health pandemic, he provided us some resources and some statements that we disseminated. But if, in fact, there's a significant spike and you're curious as to whether it would make sense to shutter the recovery zone, he would be a resource to call upon.
Perfect. Sounds good to us.
Very good. Okay. We do have a motion on the floor to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Holly, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Gentlemen, thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to new business item 20-113. This is Phase 1 Environmental for Wastewater Treatment Plant Tetra Tech. I'm going to start this one off, and it's just going to be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 13, 2020 letter from Patty McCall and Brian Rubel of Tetra Tech. Is there a second to that motion? Is that Girbaugh?
Yes.
Thank you. Intrum City Manager Green, do you want to kick this one off?
Yeah. This agenda was based on a recommendation you guys made a couple weeks ago to get information regarding what it would cost to do Phase 1 on all three of our, our site has a wastewater treatment plant, and then the two sites that are potential interests for an expansion. And Tetra Tech, they will provide us a quote for this. Also, I was asked by Councilmember, what do we want to just do the Phase 1 on our current site and hold off on the other two sites to see if we can get, see if we can just get the information from the AD and person doing the Phase 1 all over it. But we do have Patty on the call to answer any specific questions. I don't know if Brian is on the call as well, but Patty, but fair to go with you guys.
Patty, are you with us? You might be muted.
Yes, hi.
Hi, Patty.
Brian is on the call, so, so yes, we can separate those out. I think that Brian sent the message back, there's Brian on. Sent the message back that we could just do the northern portion of the wastewater treatment plant for you.
And what was the cost of that, Patty?
Brian, I guess it's $17,200, which is...
It is $17,200 based on the...
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Let me add something further, and this will provide some context as to why I simply moved to acknowledge receipt and not approve. And we'll be able to report out in greater detail on the 3rd of August. But Intrum City Manager Green and I met with Mike Stolton, who was our contact for the better part of six years, who spearheaded the environmental remediation of the old Universal diecast Hoover Ball bearing site on Monroe Street. He was... He was laid off from Adient, I believe, four or five months ago, and is now with Environmental Evaluations and Consulting LLC. We had an excellent discussion. He will likely be in attendance at our next meeting on August 3 to talk about some services that he could provide to the city, either a package or à la carte, essentially, for lack of a better way to articulate it. But he offered an excellent idea to the interim city manager, and I referenced the two parcels, the one that contains a prefabbed unit adjacent to our wastewater treatment plant, and then the larger one across the street. Per federal statute, Adient would be required to share most of the information with the city of Celine, reference their ongoing environmental cleanup, and also past reports and analysis on the extent of contamination on those two sites. So, because they're legally required to do that, his suggestion, which I thought was an excellent one, was to develop a page on our city website dedicated to the remediation of the Monroe Street properties, make contact with folks at Adient, and he provided interim city manager Green with a number of individuals, allow them to provide us those documentations via our city website, which would not only benefit the city and our staff, but also the publics from an optics and transparency perspective, that they would be able to review all the documentation, reference this site. And then, it would allow us the basis to subsequently conduct a Phase One environmental evaluation, potentially at a reduced cost, because we have so much of that written material already provided. So, I thought that was a phenomenal idea. I don't mean to put the acting or the interim city manager on the spot, but I think he agreed with my assessment. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
Correct, it's, at least we're in opportunity.
So, okay. So, I'm happy to open it up for questions. I can address some, the interim city manager can probably address some, and of course, our friends from Tetra Tech who are on the call can also address a number of your questions and concerns. I'll start with Councilmember Del Oracle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that plan makes perfect sense. It enables us to tailor the approach to what is needed and to benefit from the information that's already been gathered and is already available. Hopefully, we would get good compliance and that it would be populated in a reasonable amount of time, and that information would be readily available to all of us, and then we can simply authorize the Phase One environmental study on the current site, and that would save the city quite a bit of money. So, I think it makes perfect sense.
Very good, thank you. Mayor Protem Girba?
I agree with Councilmember Del Car.
Okay. Transitioning to those participating remotely, Councilmember CEO.
I think it's my idea that we should be, you know, enhancing what we already have on the existing site, is just depending on the availability of additional land, additional land, if we even needed across the street. So, I'd like to skip forward to Phase One as quickly as possible. I don't think we save all that much money by separating it into three different pieces. And I think that, you know, the longer we stretch this thing out, the worse it is for all of us. I'd like to get the Phase One done immediately, so that we can see whether or not that's a viable thing to think of that Adient property as a potential for future growth.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I am not in favor of doing anything with the property on the west side. I think that's the parcel ending in 009, is that correct? And in the packet?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. So, I guess, so this was my suggestion two weeks ago, that we have all of the information we need. Whoever buys that property is liable for whatever happens to it next. My information was different than what Mr. CEO heard. The information I heard is that we could most likely fit what we needed to with our land and that extra surveying piece, and possibly with the parcel of 015. So, I'm just not in favor of moving forward with the ecologically sound property at all.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Um, I have a question for Mr. Rubel, really quickly. So, I see that the proposal is only the northern part of the current wastewater treatment plant, so we don't need to Phase One the actual plant's property?
You might be muted, Mr. Rubel. Are you there, Brian?
Yep. I see you.
Yep, I see you.
Got a nasty echo.
Did you hear Councilwoman Dillon's question, Mr. Rubel? You're muted.
I think he's trying to talk to a phone instead of his computer, and that might be why he has echo, he has whole things running next to each other.
I'm answering on the.
Want to try it now, Brian? Just give us a briefs?
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
There you go.
Just give us a real brief succinct response.
I will try my best, and Patty's on, she has quite a bit of information. But, yeah, the reason it was the northern parcel is we will pull data for the entire parcel about past uses of the land, but part of this assessment also includes looking at the current use of the land. And they're really, we wouldn't exclude the current treatment plant operation itself from that. We already know what chemicals are used at the current plant, so to have to document all that and assess it just did not provide the city any value. So, that is why the northern part of that parcel might.
Okay. So, you feel confident that if you were to reconfigure the current plant, there would not be environmental concerns?
There has not been in past projects. We've taken soil origins on past projects, and they've always been clean and allowed us to receive, so. I can't say it's zero risk, but it's 30% risk.
And I can add that we would still get information through database search on potential issues on the site, but what I imagine we'll find is more things related to compliance, just compliance requirements, and those are things that we decided aren't necessary for this particular Phase One, but if there were some other environmental issue, it would show up in that database search.
Okay. And so, Mr. Rubel, you had suggested in your report that it would be about a six-week process. Is that just for this piece, or would it be less time if you're not doing the others?
Eddie can answer best, but I think the process is going to be the same, whether we do three in parallel or one in on its own, so I still think it'll take about six weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, questions or comments?
Um, yes, thank you. So, for the northern, the northern piece ending in 001, how many acres is, that's a pretty significant piece, and I'm leaning towards not looking at the Adient property unless we really need to, just because of the size, the additional area that 001 and 015 would give us. So, do you know how many acres that is? Does that almost, with low pieces, doubles the existing type area?
I do not have those measurements.
I don't, I look here, it never falls on. I don't know that we have it in the proposal. My apologies. We can.
No, that's okay. It looks significant, I think that's the point. And being concerned about the potential, you know, the risk and liability of maybe the Adient property really has me, you know, concerned, and especially if we're going to do a phased approach for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. So, I like the idea of going with the two parcels there on the east side of Monroe. And aside from that, I appreciate you invited, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor moved by Marl, seconded by Girba to simply acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. I'll move to approve a Phase One environmental assessment of the existing wastewater treatment plant at an estimated cost of $7,200.
Second.
Moved by Marl, seconded by Girba. So, real quick, unless there's objections from my council colleagues, Intrum City Manager Green, I know you were on vacation last week, but I would like you to reach out to our Adient contacts or the contacts that were provided later this week, and see if we can begin the process of developing a page on our city website and get them to basically provide us the documents necessary to, in the future, conduct a Phase One, but of equal importance, it provides our constituents some information, reference the extent of environmental contamination on site and ongoing efforts to remediate that. So, I just would remind my colleagues that this issue goes well beyond whether we decide to invest in the property at a later date and expand our wastewater treatment plant. Our most immediate goal should be providing the public necessary information and doing whatever we can within our power to encourage Adient to move expeditiously to complete environmental remediation of that site. So, unless there's objections, the interim city manager will make contact with Adient later this week and attempt to get the ball rolling on that. And it would be my hope that we get that page established and information provided to us, so that we could discuss a potential Phase One for those two Adient sites, former Johnson Control sites, by September of this year. Is there any discussion on the motion moved by Marl, seconded by Girba to conduct a Phase One environmental for the existing wastewater treatment site at a cost, approximate cost of $7,200?
Mayor Marl?
Yep, we're going to start, oh, we're going to start at the dais.
Okay.
Just real quickly, I just want to reiterate the point that Mr. Rubel made at last discussion on the wastewater treatment plant sighting study, that a concern or a caveat to just focusing exclusively on the current site to the north, ending in 001, and the site at 015 on the east side of Monroe, is that the more we develop that space, the closer we get to existing neighborhoods and existing homes. And I think our approach to this should be holistic, in that we gather as much data as possible, especially if the data has already been gathered through databases for the Adient property. It doesn't commit us to anything, it doesn't commit us to the purchase of the property or absorbing any kind of liability, but we should be mindful of an approach that enables us to expand the wastewater treatment plant in such a way that doesn't create a situation where we're moving closer to homes and neighborhoods, as we all know that the problems that can cause. So, that's my only concern at this point, thanks.
Very good. Mayor Protem Girba, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm just glad we're just moving forward on the one property that we own, before we get into any kind of trouble with eminent domain and everything else on the other properties, so this is fine.
Okay. Mr. CEO, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Your Honor, just that it seems to me that our decision to move forward incrementally as we are by expanding on our own property and then potentially the adjacent properties is now one that relies on those adjacent properties being reasonable and available with the time we need them. So, I'd like to see us move forward as quickly as possible with any kind of adjudication on our part, but that's even feasible in the future by moving to Phase One on all of it at this time. If you think that we gather sufficient information by asking them to comply, it's fine. And I'm not sure what kind of cooperation they have.
Sure.
They've been this long in trying to remediate what they've already got, and I'm not sure how it's on to Adient or any other sort of company that they develop is going to be.
Fair enough, thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Um, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I, I think Mr. CEO has gotten something there. It was my impression that everything we needed could be fit on the parcels ending in 1 and 015. And there's a, there's a map in our packet on page 64 that shows kind of the size. I think I remember I had a question about that, so that was helpful to me with reviewing these documents. So, I guess I would like some clarification. When you say, are we talking about Phase One? Can we, with the change in technology, can we fit Phase One and Two, assuming that we have two additional properties to what the wastewater treatment plant is now?
I'm sorry, who's that question directed to? Is that to Brian Rubel or our consultants from Tetra Tech?
I would think so. Who knows about the footprint of Phase One versus Phase Two?
Yeah. Brian, do you want to address that?
All the future phases can fit on the current footprint, they just get closer to the neighboring house.
Uh-huh. So, I guess, so my issue, you know what, it's kind of similar to the parking. We don't have a perfect solution. I'm hoping that our better technology will really dampen any effect on homes. If we were to build on parcels, on the west parcel of Adient, it's really close to homes there. So, I don't know that we would be avoiding that particular issue by moving any part of the operation across the street. So, and I just want to be clear, Your Honor, did you amend the, this proposition, is it just for parcels 001 and 015 now?
It's, yeah, to approve a Phase One environmental assessment of the existing wastewater treatment plant at an approximate cost of $7,200.
It's just 001.
Just 001.
Oh, we're not going to do the 015?
Not, that's not the motion that I offered.
I see. Um, I guess then I'd like you to clarify, why did you decide to exclude the parcel 015?
Because, similar to the larger parcel, I think we can collect from Adient data and reports on that site, which will subsequently reduce the cost of a future Phase One environmental analysis.
Oh, I see, okay, I didn't understand, we haven't, we just haven't talked about the parcel 015 a lot, so I didn't understand that they would have that updated information on that eastward property, so, okay.
They should, and I'm also hoping that, and Mr. Stolton confirmed this when the interim city manager and I met with him, it's also his understanding, of course, he's worked for Adient, he wasn't on site when it was Johnson Controls, or Johnson Controls, when it was Hoover Universal Diecast, but his assumption was the same as mine, which is, we believe that that eastern parcel, there was no industrial activity on site. It was always surface parking for employees and management, but we need to get that confirmed, of course.
And so, I guess, so when you say we need to get that confirmed, you're looking at the Adient typical guy, that information as well?
Correct.
I see, okay. Thank you. So, you're, just to make sure, you're proposing that we spend, is it 7,000 or 7,500?
Approximately 7,200.
200, and we're just doing the parcel that ends in 001?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I'll be supporting that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. First, and it might be for Mr. Green or for the mayor, have we confirmed that Adient does not have any conflict of interest policy with this former employee contracting with the city, which was, you know, part of their process?
We did ask them that, and he, Mike can confirm this, but he indicated there was none.
Okay, well, we have not confirmed that directly through Adient.
No, because I don't think the city, the interim city manager has been in contact with them yet, but he can confirm that this week.
Okay, I would definitely want that confirmed. I think Ms. Mitchell made a statement, and that I also want to reiterate, is that no matter where we go, we're increasing the footprint of the plant, and it's going to be closer to homes. Whether we build on site, we add the parcel across the street, it's in close proximity Whether we build on site, we add the parcel across the street, it's in close proximity, it's in within the city, it's gonna be close to homes, and that's something that we need to consider no matter what. And then I wanted to touch base about what Mr. Seo said, and the, I mean, we're holding back on $11,000 doing this. I mean, I don't know, if you feel as though you can get this Phase One from Adient in less than six weeks and we can evaluate it, then I'm fine with that. But I'm concerned with the fact that it has taken us months to even get them to even come to City Council to provide information to us. So, I mean, I am just in favor of spending the $11,000 and we just do it ourselves and be gone, and we have the information, and we can make a decision based on information we have.
Yeah, I understand that perspective. I would, my rebuttal would be, I think we should just give staff a chance to see if we can make this happen. And again, there's an optics and transparency component to this too, which is, we would be developing a dedicated webpage that could be a repository for all of this information, which then could be accessed by our constituents and interested parties who are interested in the history of the site, but more importantly, the ongoing environmental remediation.
And who would be maintaining, who's going to build the site and who's going to maintain it and upload the information?
Well, we would need to talk to Chris about that, but, you know, I envision it as being fairly simple with a pretty generic header dedicated to, you know, indicating that the page is reserved for the environmental remediation of the former Universal Diecast Hoover Ball bearing site, and then I think it would mainly contain PDF documents that were provided by Adient.
Okay. And that is just for the public's information, is that what this, that's all around?
Well, it's twofold. It's not only for the public's benefit, but it would also be used as a basis for a subsequent Phase One for both of the sites, and thereby reduce the cost of that initiative.
Okay. Now, what is your anticipated timeframe for this?
For what?
For this website and all this information to be uploaded?
Well, it's a webpage, I want to be clear, it's a webpage, not an entire website. I would hope we would be able to get information, start to populate that next month and see something pretty close to complete by September. And if we don't start to gain traction in the coming weeks, then I would expect the Intram City Manager to come back with a request that we just spend the additional dollars and conduct a Phase One for both sites.
Okay, but then I guess, like you said, I'm concerned, because I feel like we're talking on all sides of our mouth, that this is a priority for us, there's timing issues, and then we're going to sort of wait over $11,000.
Well, but...
I'm just not 100% sure that that's the most prudent move at this point. I mean, I guess, if we could get Adient within the next, you know, 24 hours to commit to say, yes, we will provide this, and what their timeframe is, then, you know, making a decision, because I don't want to be six weeks down the road and have partial information.
Well, we can certainly report out in two weeks, but I just want to clarify, Janet, we're not gonna get a commitment from them in 24 hours. That's not realistic. Could we get commitments from them in the next week and begin to receive documents and start to populate them on a website in the next 10 to 14 days? Absolutely. I think if we don't get traction on this between now and our next meeting on the third, again, to a previous point, it would be my expectation that the Intram City Manager come back and just say, we're not getting traction with Adient, we like the idea of populating a portion of our city website with information that the public could access, that's not gonna happen, let's just pull the trigger and spend the additional resources to execute a Phase One environmental for both those parcels.
Now, will we be paying Mr. Rubel, Tetra Tech, to analyze and review and, you know, summarize those Phase One documents that we get or any documents that we get?
Well, those would be the basis for a subsequent Phase One, so yes.
Okay, I guess, I'm gonna ask Mr. Rubel, you know, is this, is it the same information? Is it Phase One from 20 years ago versus 10 years ago versus tomorrow? Is it always gonna be the same information?
I think the answer is yes. Patty can jump in and correct me, but we would be gathering the same information.
We would be gathering information through the state, so we would FOI the state for all the information they have on that address, so it would be everybody who has owned that property that they have documents for.
And so, would Adient even have all of that information? If they weren't always the owner of it?
Not necessarily.
Okay, I, once again, I'm just gonna go back to, I would be more in favor of us just doing it ourselves, knowing that we had a complete set of documents.
Fair enough. Councilmember Kamero Sulak? You might be muted.
I support the current measure of hand.
Thank you. If there's nothing further from the dais or from those participating remotely, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Marl, seconded by Gearbox to approve a Phase One environmental assessment for the existing wastewater treatment plant at an approximate cost of $7,200. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any nays? Nope, okay. Motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item, thank you, Brian, and, what was the other one, Sharon?
Patty McCollum.
Patty, excuse me. Thank you, Patty. Appreciate your time. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I couldn't meet myself in time to vote aye.
Okay. Okay. So, motion, thank you, Mr. Seo, motion carries six to one. We move on to new business item 20-114, liquor license agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 20, 2020 memo from City Attorney Forshee and to approve and authorize or not approve the liquor license transfer.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Mayor Protim Gearbox to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. Intram City Manager Green, do you care to make a statement?
Yes, sir. This is a pretty straightforward motion that I hope you guys approve. RT Detroit, who has control of the former Ruby Tuesday's building, just needs our blessing to sell their liquor license to another entity that's interested in the building. So, council approval, Mr. Forshee will submit the official letter of approval to this debate, and they'll be good to go to proceed with their statement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. The mayor's had you lead for a moment, he'll come back in a second, I'm taking over. Councilmember Del Orco, do you have any comments?
I do not, this is very straightforward, and I think it makes sense to move forward with the plan.
Councilmember Seo, any questions or statements?
I'm also just, I agree with it, also, I think we need to move forward.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
I'm going to approve this, I only know that it'll be a bitter disappointment for those folks who wanted a marijuana dispensary there, so, maybe next time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Dillon, any questions?
You're muted, Janet.
I know, my brother gave one more. No, I don't have the questions, no, I'm a little bit short, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman, Councilmember Kamero Sulak, any questions?
No questions, I think this is straightforward, a done deal.
Okay.
I agree, thank you.
And with that, we'll go ahead and to acknowledge receipt of the July 20 memo from City Attorney Forshee and to approve and authorize or not approve the liquor license transfer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Returning the chair back to our mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Gearbox, perfect timing. We move on to new business item 20-115, drainage solution for 491 East Look. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 14, 2020 memo from City Engineer Fordyce and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to install a city storm sewer in the rear yard of 491 East Look to resolve a drainage issue.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gearbox to acknowledge receipt, is there a second? Oh, I think that was Kamero Sulak, I'll let him be the second. Engineer Fordyce, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to provide some background on this, and then we'll do a round robin of questions before we entertain the subsequent motion to approve or not to approve?
Sir, and I think maybe approved is a little bit premature at this point. This is just a concept plan and a cost estimate, so I think it would be to approve pursuing this, and then it would come back for, or the final approval, which we have actually designed to lay out. But the problem is, the owners of 491 East Look contacted us earlier this year of an ongoing drainage issue in their rear yard. I went out, took a look at it, there's plenty of evidence of long-term significant drainage issues kind of backfurthered their lot, and then it was recent evidence of some more extensive flooding that reached almost all the way to their foundation. This area is a subdivision of Site Pando, so there's no homeowners association, and the original drainage plan, first site plan included crosslot, rear yard drainage, so at the back property line of these houses, East Look and back property line of the adjacent houses on Harpul, it was designed and graded in a way that water would flow to that property line, and then to the east to a catch basin that's at the low point of the block, and that directs the water out into the Palm Supers and tree. Because of that, because of the way this is set up, there is an easement, utility easement, and then along that property line, I felt it was a matter of a public solution, and discussed that with the previous city manager, he agreed that's what I had, came up with this concept plan and the cost estimate. There is, there's some question as to, you know, whether this definitively is a city responsibility, and what exactly the nature of that easement is in the rear. We are currently looking for the final site plan for this area, so we can confirm what information is on there. I've worked on drainage issues in this area before, so from memory, I know there's not a heck of a lot of information on the site plan, I'm pretty sure it just says utility easement, and that it shows drainage, and that it shows private utilities in there. So that's another reason to think approved or not approved is perhaps premature at this point to get whatever information is available on that easement, but I would want with the expectation that it's not going to be a real definitive defined easement, easements in this area. I intend to just show up on the site plan, and there's a little bit of information there, and I have to figure it out in the interim, unfortunately.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Fordyce. And just for the public's record, I have been in contact over the course of the last two or three months with the property owners, I do believe there is a legitimate and serious problem in their backyard, and I'm fully in support of continuing to move forward on this and develop a public solution that will ultimately benefit them, but also some of their adjacent property owners as well. So I'm working on some modified language for the subsequent motion, but right now we are simply discussing Mr. Fordyce's memo of July the 14th. I'll turn it over to Mr. Del Orco for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor Marl. Jeff, in your memo, you cited that some of the problem may have been caused by obstructions such as sheds and fences on the easement. Are those items that were, for which permits were pulled and final inspections were approved by the city?
I did not go and know the permit history there. From what I can observe on the ground, it definitely appears that some people applied for permits and applied fences outside of the easement, other folks did not. So, there are certain sheds require zoning permit, sheds of certain sizes require building permit, fences require zoning permit. Landscaping does not require any permits, so it appears some folks installed their landscaping cognizant of the easement, and other folks either ignored it or not aware of the importance of it. So, at this point, you know, we're 70 years down the road, you know, I think this went in, I don't know, 60 years down the road.
I see.
There's just, there's so many things there now, mature trees, and to try to recreate it at this point, it just seems very disruptive and much more difficult than splitting the distance in half, putting in a catch basin.
Okay. And my second and final question is, if we were to do this, will this water end up in a storm drain retention pond, or does it end up going to be treated by the wastewater treatment plant?
This particular area, this catch basin would be connected into the city storm sewer, which is no portion of our storm sewer, is connected to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, so it's gonna remain separate from the sanitary system?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Gearbox?
I don't have many questions about the solution, but I do have the question about the city footing the bill for it. I see this as a similar type of situation as a county drain or anything that's being resolved from that, that the properties adjacent to it or in the surrounding area that have impacted this issue should be assessed for the completion of this drain and to improve that cost as a result. I could see not necessarily assigning the entire cost, because if the city did have some involvement in allowing some of the buildings or whatever to resolve a problem with that, but as you said, we don't know exactly whether or not permits were pulled with our approval, or that would take some more research?
Yeah, that would take a lot of research.
What other easements are on that, are on that electrical and gas and whatever else, or just us as a city?
I know there are private utilities, but they're electrical, I think, capable of gas.
Everything above ground or underground?
It's both.
So we've got, so we have a situation where we're gonna have to account for all those other utilities at the time this gets installed?
Certainly, yeah, anytime we do our excavation, we do a distinct request, but the amount of work that we're doing in that easement, under this proposal, is just at one location to install the catch basin, and then we would have to acquire a new easement along the side yard property line and bring it out to the street, so we wouldn't be doing much work in that easement at all.
Okay. You had mentioned that you thought this was similar to the issue that we had on Canterbury Park and in that area. However, in this case, the city doesn't own any of this property, it's just an easement on this, for the most part, isn't it?
Correct, we don't own any property of this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Gearbox. Councilmember Seo, any questions for DBW Director Fordyce?
Yes, Mr. Fordyce, how large would this green be, you know? I mean, what do you agree with the green?
It'd just be 12-inch, because it's the smallest storm.
Okay. And then with this, all the other problems, I mean, I assume if it's backing up to that extent in his backyard, it must be affecting some of his adjacent neighbors too.
The way the land lays out, the problem is almost entirely on this particular parcel. So there's, there are upstream slightly uphill properties that are appearing to be watered to the problem, and his neighbors in the rear, his lot slopes up just enough that he doesn't have so much of the consequences. So, how do you want East Look, because it's kind of receiving all the problems of these private cities?
I see. I don't know, but I think if it's feasible, I'd like Mr. Gearbox's idea of trying to assess some of the adjacent folks who otherwise interfered with the drainage, but that's just not working the way it was originally designed. I don't know what basis for that would be, or whether there is a basis. If there's not, then I guess we're gonna start, and we should try to do the right thing, but one only another problem we need, just carrying in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seo. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. And first, I just have to tell the folks listening at home that I did not send this question ahead of time to Mr. Fordyce, as I normally do, so I will apologize now to Mr. Fordyce. I'm glad you brought up the Canterbury soil, because I've gone over personally and cleared the drains so that the water could drain away, and it works super efficiently when the drains don't get clogged. What is going to be visible along this property line between 491 and 476? What is gonna be visible above ground, please?
This would be a casting that we call a beehive. It's a grate, similar to what you see on the side of the road in catch basins, but it's domed.
Okay.
It looks almost like a turtle.
Okay.
And it's domed so that as the rain collects around the wall... And it's domed so that as the rain collects around the lower parts of it, water has an area to rise up above and begin to. It's much more substantial and visible than the yard drains that are in Canterbury Park zone.
Okay. Thank you so much. I guess in general, as far as an assessment, you know, we didn't have a city code for reinforcement officer for a while. If there are buildings there that we issued permits to, I think this is something that the city has to take ownership over. It's not $100,000. It's $21,000. And I just, I feel like we have a little bit more of a stake here than to put this on the other owners. And it brings up an interesting problem of how do we tell homeowners where their easements are? You know, so obviously, there wasn't a lot of, so people either didn't know, which I'm going to assume, or they didn't care. And so maybe the city has to do something to be more proactive with these types of spots especially, but maybe to all homeowners. Mr. Fordice, is there another area in the city like this that you have to look at?
Not exactly like this. There certainly are public and private utilities and it's on private property throughout the city. Typically, those recorded easements show up on a mortgage survey. So I think they should be visible to every purchaser of a home. Whether or not they know what that means, that's, I guess, another question.
Right. And, you know, having guided a 22-year-old through buying a house, I bet she and her husband did not look at the easement of the property. And maybe the city can have in mind a way to raise that issue. But those are all the questions I have. And thank you, Mr. Fordice, for being graceful about me not asking that question ahead of time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon, any questions or comments for Director Ford or for Engineer Fordice?
Thank you. All right. You have a couple of questions, Mr. Fordice. First, what has been the city's ask practice about such things?
So in site condominiums, you know, so the more, basically, all the housing developments that have happened in the past 20 years, we have made drainage outside of the right-of-way responsibility of the homeowners association. So during the site plan process, we try to make developers aware of that and maybe have to think about how they're going to lay out their drainage systems. Developments prior to that, most of them were subdivisions, which is, you know, it's just a different legal mechanism for developing land, but it does not create a homeowners' association. It's just that the land gets divided into a bunch of lots, and those each have individual private owners, and there's no joint responsibility for the neighborhood. So in those neighborhoods, that, it issues that affect more than one parcel tend to fall to the municipality. And that's why in this case, I just have to, with my opinion, in a more of a public situation than a private drainage issue. So we've had instances where, you know, there was multiple property owners or private parcels that were creating their issues for other properties. And I think we can, at a very low level, low-cost level, help devise or create some sort of solution. We do that at this neighborhood a couple of times. Been working with Steve and they see a couple other issues throughout town, you know, where sometimes it's as simple as telling somebody to move the downsides, but we pointed it in a different direction and then the drainage process. So bigger ones like this, there are occasions where we have gone and acquired drainage easements over private parcels to create a new drainage feature that diverts water away from other private properties. So there's not a huge history of that, but there are a couple of instances.
Okay. So then, the easement that the city would create going from the rear of this property to the street that's underground, is it an open swell or is it, it's a pipe underground?
It's a pipe. Yeah, underground pipe.
No, you're not thinking this wall?
Right. The only, the visible components would be the beehives at the rear property line, and then just to give the line a break, there'd have to be a manhole in the lawn extension on this look. Everything else would be underground.
Okay. And do you feel as though we would be setting a precedent in doing this, meaning that the city would pay for it? And I will, before you answer, I'm going to say to you, because, and I think you're very well aware of this, there is a very similar situation in another area of the city. And I think that you are opening the door to those people coming in and saying, I want the same thing, because I'm not going to make a French drain or have foundation issues or whatever, even if the city should have responsibility.
Yeah.
So I think that's important.
Yeah, and that's a valid, it's a very valid concern. There certainly are, you know, rear yard drainage issues in other parts of the city. You know, so perhaps we want to create some sort of evaluation standard, you know. So my, the standard I apply to this one is, you know, multiple properties contributing to one other property's problem, and that property owner, you know, isn't responsible for that drainage that's heading towards them. And has no, you know, no way to pass it through the way the system wants to die. So it's, you know, so you're absolutely right, though. There are other drainage issues in the city that folks could start to bring it forward and we could look at them and say, you know, this, in our, in our opinion, somebody's opinion, this requires a public solution.
Right. And I like what Mr. Gearbox has said about, you know, kind of, you know, cheer the burden. Like you said, I'm very concerned about the city taking on responsibility for this when there's not even, we should clarify or confirm that the easement is ours, that the errors were ours. It's just we're sort of the last person holding out to take it right now.
Yeah. And I don't think there's any, there's any, I don't think there's any evidence that there were errors on the part of the city. I think this is just a natural progression of homeownership, you know, with a bunch of individual folks out there who are working on their yards and improving their lot, but it ends up creating problems because of a lack of awareness of what function that space is supposed to be.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamira Sulek, any questions or comments for our city engineer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So how long has this flooding been happening?
This, I mean, so I, I mean, one of the first things that I did when I started working with the city was deal with drainage issues in this neighborhood. You know, so there's been, there've been some challenges there for decades. You know, we still, today, have been able to fix them relatively easily, but it's minor grade changes. This one, though, at this point, I think it's too much for grading. I believe the homeowners said, you know, that they've been not able to use that extra in their yard or somewhere in the highest of the year. It's been a bit long time.
Is there, is there anything that we can do, the other yards that are draining into it? I guess I'm trying to understand, and I'm not too far from there, so I know in the old preneighborhood, there's a lot of drainage and flooding issues. So I'm, I'm sensitive to that. But as far as looking at setting precedent and how this, how this started, and if there's anything that we can do first before, and I'm not questioning your due diligence, but just trying to understand, you know, why it's gotten so much, you know, so much worse. And I know you send other homeowners doing improvements to their properties, but...
Yeah. It really, it really is a simple effect that just, you know, somebody looks at their yard and says, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to put in some topsoil to improve grass in this area. And that raises the grade of the inch. And sometimes it's a little of that, you know, with that inch, and then prevents water from crossing the lot, and it's left to soak into, you know, the lot.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Director Fordice, for the subsequent motion, how does this sound? A motion to approve or not to approve pursuing a storm, pursuing installation of a stormwater sewer in the rear of 491 East Look to resolve drainage issues?
You know, I think the director's staff to continue to pursue it and define the, maybe it makes more sense to table it and give us to the next meeting to find that site plan and gather what information we can have on the easement. And then perhaps we can ask the city attorneys to let us know what the steps of an assessment would be.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. Yeah, I prefer postpone versus table, but you think you'd be able to report out by our next meeting on the 3rd?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right. Well, let's vote on the first motion. We have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbox, seconded by Kamira Sulek to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say aven, the motion carries unanimously. Is there anybody who'd like to move a motion to postpone further consideration until our next meeting on August 3rd?
Move to postpone.
Moved by Gearbox to postpone, seconded by CEO. Any discussion from the dais? Any discussion from, from those participating remotely? Appears as if there is none, so we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion moved by Gearbox, seconded by CEO, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say aven, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 20-117, Maple Road interim repairs. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of July 14th, 2020 memo from city engineer Fordice and to authorize, not authorize, a change order in the amount of $48,160 for Maple Road interim paving repairs to the existing contract with Asphalt Specialties Incorporated.
Move to acknowledge and to authorize.
Moved by Mayor Portem Gearbox to acknowledge and to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
I think the dollar amount was, well, it depends on which option council wants to pursue. I had recommended the full lane repair, which was a higher dollar amount, which I can give you in a second here. But anyway, so we were hoping to win the category F grant for Maple Road. We were not successful, did not receive that grant. So then we took that opportunity to spend some more time planning and figuring out our east belt upgrades, which unfortunately meant the road did not get repaired this year. Council had asked for an interim solution, because we hired Midwestern Consulting to help prepare that solution. There were folks and I walked. The road, a couple of times, determined kind of the worst sections and put together the plan that's in your pack and showing which sections would be metal and have a thin layer of asphalt replaced to improve the ride in those areas. We also asked NSI to give the quote for just the full travel lane, because we know that starting and stopping milling machines and starting and stopping paving machines takes time, which in time is money. So the full lane, this would replace the travel lanes, basically from the library to bank. That cost is $59,770 versus the $48,160 for that as a spot repair. And on a per-ton basis, the larger project is the better rate, that's only 137 per ton versus 155 per ton for the shorter spotting repairs.
Yeah. Engineer Fordice, we did discuss this matter briefly at our transition team meeting a week ago Wednesday. I don't really have that much of a dog in this fight. If council wants to go with the higher dollar amount and do a more comprehensive fix, that's fine. I guess we were, my opinion or my initial thoughts on the $48,000 were predicated on the notion that I believe it was pretty likely that we'll be able to access those federal grant dollars next year to do a resurfacing of Maple Road.
Well, next year, we'll be doing the east belt upgrade. So, you know, one way or another, that road is just coming out.
Right. Right. Okay. But I mean, you're the professional here, Jeff. This is your vocation. I mean, what do you think is a better investment, doing the 48,000 or doing the more comprehensive short-term fix at, what was the number, 59?
59,770, yeah. Certainly, the 59,770 is the better value, but you have to, you know, compare that value to how long we're going to have this in place.
Right.
This is going to be less than a year. This is a temporary improvement of the area that road.
Right.
And, you know, it is kind of interesting to mention you being the professional. There are not any, there's no, there's no standards for fixing a road for a year. All the standards are, you know, guided around trying to make it last as long as possible. So this is an interesting topic.
But, I mean, it's, it's a major thoroughfare through our community and, you know, the state of Maple Road has generated a number of inquiries and messages to my office. So while it may be an interim fix and only be good for 10, 11 months, I mean, it will certainly, people will notice an improvement and they will, they will appreciate that. But, yeah, I guess, you know, hearing now what you said, in addition to our discussion at the transition team, I'm thinking the $48,000 is probably more, more appropriate. But we'll have, we'll hear what my, we'll hear what my colleagues have to say. Mr. Del Orco, any questions or comments reference the motion?
It would appear, given the short-term solution here, the smaller scope of the $48,000 would be more appropriate. It's likely that we're going to go through and tear out all this section of road for the east belt sewer reconstruction, hopefully on schedule 21. And that would, is it likely that we'll get the grant dollars, the subsequent funding cycle for this, or is it still very unclear?
It's very hard to predict.
Okay.
There are some grants that tend to have sort of a cycle and spread the money around evenly amongst eligible parties, but category F is not one of those. It is a competitive grant. We've seen it once, several years ago.
Okay. Well, I guess I really don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I mean, I can be persuaded to spend the extra if people feel strongly about having a more comprehensive project, but I'm leaning towards the $48,000.
Very good. Mayor Portem Gearbox.
Yeah, I voted for this because of that recommendation of $48,000. But Jeff, is there any reimbursement or anything coming out of the developers for Maple Oaks? Weren't they supposed to do something?
Yes. I don't really know where that stands, but yes, they were on the hook for rehabbing the frontage and fixing the drainage issue that retrieved what their water fell.
Actually, I can provide some insight on that, Mr. Fordice, because I recall at a previous council meeting, we empowered the then-city manager Todd Campbell to send them a communique. So Mike or interim manager Green, perhaps we can discuss that tomorrow. We're at the transition team meeting on Wednesday, but we should get a communication to them in very short order because they need to, they need to not only make a repair, but also, per-site plan, install a crosswalk there.
Okay. At this, at this point, I would rather than pressuring them to make the repair, I would pressure them to provide money, because this repair goes through the frontage and that area will also be significantly excavated during the east belt repair.
Well, and that's kind of my idea, is that not knowing how much they would have to reimburse us, would it be worth it to do the additional cost? You know, if we were to do a whole lane through there, do you have any idea what they would have to pay us for what they need to do?
I don't have that estimate, but both of these repairs, both scopes, by most of their frontages, it's all of the east lane and most of the southern lane on the west side.
Okay, so, okay. I agree. I think for right now, if we know we're going to tear this up in a year, but knowing everything's uncertain at this point, the difference is, it's up to council whether we want to go ahead with the additional money, because then it would give us additional leeway in the event that we don't get an F1 if it takes another two or three years. If it takes another two or three years, at least that portion of the road would be repaired. And then you wouldn't have to worry about the patch and the weather destroying it all over the next two years so quickly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. CEO, any questions or comments?
My comment would be that I think toward the lower round, simply because it's going to be torn up again, the east belt project, we might as well go ahead and spend the least amount of money that we can.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. What is the, what's the status of Maple Oaks? Are they going to be doing major construction during this project? Are they doing it afterwards? What is their completion? Do you have to answer those questions, Your Honor?
Um, my understanding, and perhaps Intrum Manager Green can correct me, there is some construction activity onsite. I think there's three or four additional units that need to be constructed. I'm not, I'm not confident off the top of my head if those are duplexes or single-family homes or a combination of both. I think they're well past the 50, 60% point of that development, but I think much of the remaining projects are towards the rear or the, what would that be? The north of that parcel.
Okay. So is there an issue with scheduling this construction during the season when they might be building?
I mean, it may, yeah, it may prevent some small hiccups and hardships, but I don't see it as inherently challenging to them.
I'm sorry, what were you going to say, Mr. Fordice?
The repair we're doing, it'll be, it's not a long-term repair. It'll be a road when we're done. You know, so if they need to bring in some additional construction, it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. I guess there are a lot of moving pieces here between, you know, the site is in construction. We have to decide if we're going to pay extra to do the whole lane. There is an issue of whether or not the company can give us funds for a crosswalk or more repairs. It just does not feel as clean as some of the things that we're dealing with, and I'm trying to figure out how to untangle all those. I guess, Your Honor, you said that you were very confident that we would get a grant next year. Is that what you said?
No, it was more of an inquiry to Mr. Fordice, but, you know, based on what he's saying, it's far from certain.
Okay. So I guess what we're betting is, are we going to have the money to do the east belt sewer project next year? And if we don't, we have to, like, you know, where Holly said we need to stop thinking about the if onlys, but I think this is a situation when we do need to think about the if onlys. You know, what is the occupancy rate? Is it safer for those neighborhoods to have a crosswalk now and try to pursue that now versus pursuing it later?
Well, if I may, the crosswalk I think is secondary to the pavement repair that needs to be done at the entrance of Maple Oaks.
Is it though?
I mean, in my judgment, it is.
I mean, I'm just so, if you have kids who live on the east side of Maple Road and they happen to go to school, and they have to cross the Maple Road, so how is that going to be?
No doubt, they're both important, but a crosswalk is going to be, I mean, it will be easier for them to install a crosswalk subsequent to that pavement being patched and repaired.
I see what you're saying. Mr. Fordice, if we, if we put in a crosswalk now, would it have to be torn out as well?
For this project, for this paving and repair?
When we do the east, so say we were somehow, we get money to do a crosswalk. Next year, we're tearing this road out to do the east belt sewer project, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
And so is there a chance, if they were to install a crosswalk, would that be ripped up or would they be able to preserve it?
It would be ripped up. The crosswalk is just paint. It's, I mean, you know, so the crosswalk is hundreds of dollars versus the millions of dollars for the east belt project, so it's.
Oh, I guess I thought it was something more like woodlet drive. We have leaky lines and, right.
Unless I'm remembering the site plan wrong, it's just a simple painted.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's paint and some additional signage.
Yeah, and curb cuts.
Yeah, and curb cuts.
Right. Okay, well, I, I don't know at this point. I'm going to hear what some of the other council members have to say. I'm not sure we're really in on this.
Okay. Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. Um, so I have to say, and I mean, I really struggle with this one, because I feel like we could spend 50 or $60,000 towards a road that's permanent and just suck it up for another year and drive on a crappy road. I'm really, really struggling with this. I, trust me, I drive Maple Road four times a day, every single day of the week. And, you know, I'll never have kidney stones because it shakes so hard. But at the same time, it's just, it's a lot of money for a very temporary fix. And so I'm really struggling with that, with that part of it. So, I mean, Mr. Fordice, where else could we use those dollars? Is there another project where those could be going towards? I guess I'm concerned, let me back up a second. So right now, when North and Arbor Street is closed, Maple sort of becomes the truck be torn, even though trucks are not there, correct? They're not supposed to turn off of Michigan, because there's nowhere else for them to turn.
They take industrial and woodlet around. That would be the legal route.
So they would have to go all the way back from industrial to woodlet to stop vehicles. Okay, that would be the truck route then? Okay. Yeah. And I guess when I'm looking at this drawing, just to clarify, you said it goes to the library, correct?
Yeah, on the lower, if you have it oriented horizontally, the lower right.
I'm looking at it upside down. Okay, so I see it goes to basically the parking lot of the library, just over the train track.
Yep.
Um, did you feel like the rest of the road was in okay enough condition that you're stopping in there?
Yeah, north of there it's in much better shape, but it's newer, that section received before reconstructed, more recently than this southern section.
Okay. Um, are we sure that the east belt is going to happen next year? Or is this like, you're just saying it's contingent, that project is contingent upon rent, correct?
Um, no, it's not. It's, we do need to do bond accord, but we have in the CIP, I believe it's budgeted without counting on the grant dollars at this point. We did not get the category F.
Right. So that means that it'll happen what, that road will be torn up next year?
Um, that's the plan. You know, if there's some other bizarre COVID thing that happens over the next year, you know, it's very hard to predict the future at this point, but that is the plan. That's what we're seeing right now.
And there is nothing that the city can do as a cheaper fix on Maple? We can't use a machine and fix it like we did on Benedict Street?
Yeah, we hired on Benedict Street. We did an extensive, with our own mini-mill, Russell, and it took a lot of time, a lot of analysis with the equipment that we have. The battery one was much more successful getting the full size of it in contractors. So, you know, the real, the alternative is we can, yeah, we can do some small patches and we can continue to patch models. And I completely understand what you're saying about, you know, this is a lot of money for a temporary hatch. It is.
Yeah. I'm really struggling with it, I'll be honest. And, you know, I don't think that I quite totally favor it at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamira Sulek?
I think you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fordice, can you remind me of what the east belt project, what the total cost is and then what we were estimating our category F grant to be?
I don't have those specific numbers in front of me. I don't know if Joe has the capability to pull them up quickly, but I think the east belt was, I believe, all told, the number is about $2 million. And the category F grant is probably in the $300,000 range.
All right. Kind of wait, the, you know, what are the chances? As much as we don't want to put it off, there are a lot of unknowns and we can't account for everything. But $2 million and what if it's significantly more next year with cost increases for material and labor? I don't want it to be put off, but I'm also factoring in, as we all are, the safety and well-being of all of our taxpayers. And, you know, it is, it is pretty rough there and it's going to get worse this winter. And I don't want to know the kidney stone, but I would rather not, you know, bump up and down that road either. And I know a lot of people aren't happy with it. Do you know what our daily traffic count is on that section of Maple Road? And, I mean, I'm also concerned that I think trucks, it would be a lot easier for them to take that and not take industrial like they're supposed to, because we do see trucks go up there periodically, but you know what the daily traffic count is?
It's somewhere around 8,000 vehicles per day. And trucks aren't permitted on Maple. It's just that the turn from westbound US 12 to northbound Maple, that is not permitted. So it is legal for trucks to be on Maple. It's just not like that particular turn.
All right. But then I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to the cost, but it's also the fact that it's going to get, it's going to get worse in the next 11 months. Hard to figure out what the probability is. And I know you don't have a crystal ball, but $2 million plus, that's a lot to, it's difficult to make a decision there because, all right, I need to think about this a little more. And I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Potem Gearbox, seconded by Councilmember Del Orco to both acknowledge and to authorize. Let me just add that I take no pleasure in spending nearly $50,000 for a 10, 11-month solution, but based on the condition of that road, the traffic volume on that road, and the fact that there's so much uncertainty in the market where we can't commit with any level of certainty that we will be able to execute a more comprehensive permit repair on that street in 2021, leads me to believe that voting in favor of this motion is the appropriate and prudent thing to do. So the motion that was made by Mayor Potem Gearbox, seconded by Del Orco, to approve $48,100 in Intrum pavement repairs to North Maple is something that I'm inclined to support. And I ultimately believe that based on the amount of feedback that I've received from constituents and property owners and community stakeholders over the past two years, I think it's something that they would be inclined to support as well. So is there any additional discussion on the motion this evening? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge and to authorize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries six to one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Yeah. We move on now to new business item 20-116, cat loader purchase. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 15th, 2020 memo from Treasurer Bennett. To approve or not to approve the using of $143,186.25 from the unassigned fund balance from the general fund and $47,428.75 from the wastewater treatment plant fund for a total of $190,915 to purchase a cat loader. Move to acknowledge and to approve. Moved by Mayor Potem Gearbox to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by CEO. Treasurer Bennett, are you still with us?
I am.
All right, the floor is yours.
Um, so as explained in my memo, our mechanic, Alex Lee, led me the by deal through the state of Michigan, which is a competitive process that we are members of. And so here the purchase of this cat loader that we discussed during our budget talks, where we, during our budget, we, you know, discussed that we weren't going to use, you know, one, we wanted to balance our budget with current existing costs, so we took out all the equipment. But Jeff and the mechanic explained to us that this was a crucial piece of equipment, and we discussed using one balance dollars to one-time purchases to get this equipment. The alternative was putting extensive repairs into this equipment, and we decided that we would purchase this new equipment. So this is just authorizing the vendor and moving forward.
Very good. We'll open it up for questions, comments. Are there any from the dais?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given that we deliberated on this exhaustively, ad nauseam during our budget discussions, I think right now it's just a formality, so I will be in support of this.
Very good. Mayor Potem Gearbox, anything you'd like to add?
Councilmember Del Orco said it very nicely.
Very good. Councilmember CEO, any questions or comments?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilwoman Mitchell? Councilwoman Mitchell, are you there? You might be muted.
I am. Thank you. No questions. Thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman Dylan?
Um, no questions on this one.
Very good. Councilmember Kamira Sulek?
Yeah, we went over this in length, so I will be supporting it.
Very good. If there's nothing further, there's a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Potem Gearbox, seconded by Councilmember CEO to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Treasurer Bennett, thank you very much. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council, from council members. Mr. Del Orco, do you have any commission, committee, or task force reports?
I do. The Environmental Commission had a nice substantive discussion last go-round. There was a lot of interest in contemplating what other communities have done to prepare for the inevitable change of shifting over technologies with electric vehicles gaining traction and market share. And the Environmental Commission would like to recommend, request, suggest, however you want to put it, that the city consider incorporating into the RFP, when we go to redo our, the parking lot for City Hall, the cost to buy hardware for three to five chargers for electric vehicles. And this is just to see what we would be looking at as far as the cost associated with that. And we can have much further discussions about how that would work as far as the infrastructure expense, whether or not to charge customers for the use of the electricity. I know there's a lot of arguments against this as far as what it would cost for the city, but I think it demonstrates forward thinking and keeps in pace with what other communities have done. For example, Pittsfield Township most recently, as well as Ann Arbor. So that's something that was discussed at length at our last Environmental Commission meeting, and I would like to urge the city to consider that.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mayor Potem Gearbox, any commission, committee, or task force reports?
None really. Planning Commission will be meeting to discuss a temporary sign, but that's it right now for.
Did you want to mention briefly the risk mitigation?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We had our first meeting with the risk mitigation group. We're now starting to agenda items and hoping to have further discussion on July 30th, I believe, 31st, 30th, I think. 31st, 30th, I think, um, to have our next meeting. And risk management, again, um, is basically, our idea is to look at all the aspects of our, our city in terms of what we consider that may be potential, um, concerns or issues, and determine appropriate way to which we can attack those ideas. Um, we're intending to have different individuals from the city come forward, and are looking forward to have additional input from some of our members of council, um, in terms of what they may consider might be risk items, such as things as financial or operational aspects, or even things that may be outside, um, influences that we are not necessarily considering at this point in time. So, if you have any ideas or whatever, please forward them to myself or, um, Lori Champion, who will be our facilitator. Thank you.
Did you or Councilwoman Dillon have, um, anything you wanted to share from the transition team? And I know that there was a question and concern about, um, scanning and organizing the files in the city, former city manager's office.
Um, at this point, I'd let Ms. Dillon discuss it as she wished.
Okay, well, we'll get to her in just a moment. Uh, thank you, Mr. Girba. Uh, Mr. CO, any, uh, Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, unfortunately, the river reason needed, and it happens, we go twice a year, um, and that is not going to happen. There is just a bit too much uncertainty, and people, I think, are nervous. The latest plan was to get together this month, get a part, and, and our masks, and I, I think people were just too nervous, and did, did not respond. I said that I would be willing to help, but that we had enough numbers. Um, so, we're going to, there are permissions in place, and there are budgets, and there are officers, we can continue on, and we'll see about the fall, we can hopefully, we can have that fall, we can, um, I think that's all I have for, for me.
Okay, very good. Uh, Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. Um, I don't have anything to report, and as far as the transition team, it continues to meet weekly, um, to support Mr. Green at this point. Um, as far as the document retention, I believe that was Ms. Mitchell's issue, um, I'm happy to, to, to talk about it, I don't know, I don't want to step on her toes, if it was something she wanted to discuss.
Sure, well, let's thank you for that. Well, let's jump back to her in the event that she has any questions or concerns. Councilwoman Mitchell, that is, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, I think you heard, so what's, what's happening now?
Uh, so I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you had some questions or concerns, reference an email that I would have sent out that was a result of a conversation that was had at one of the recent transition team meetings about having Al Getzmann work with Mayor Potem Girba to go through the files in the city manager's office and scan and save what was appropriate, and, uh, to, to discard that which is no longer necessary to retain.
Right, so I, I guess, um, my concern is that, I think it's a heavy burden on city staff and on a council member to make decisions about what could be had and what should be changed. I also think that the person who comes and takes the permanent manager position may want to have access to the files as they are. I'm trying to think if I heard about, you know, um, if we, if we are considered aboard, and the city manager is the CEO, I don't think any of the board would be involved in scanning the files. So, there were just a number of concerns that I had, and, uh, I, that's where I left it.
Yeah, well, let me add this. First of all, obviously, record retention, key and vital records that need to be retained by the organization, that would be done through the clerk's office, of, of course, not through the city manager's office. Uh, and what, what you would find if you were to open any of the, the files in the city manager's office is that most of them are, are, are full, um, and it appears, um, from my own observations that, uh, no files or memorandums have ever been discarded in the last 25 to 30 years. I mean, there are files in there from when Dave White and Jim Lovlepp were city managers, so in the early 1980s, um, excuse me, late 1980s, early 1990s, I mean, there were copies of a first draft of a budget from 1988, a Teamsters grievance from 1991. I mean, things that you just, we don't need to retain, uh, or if they need to be retained, or if we have questions if they need to be retained, we could ask the, uh, the clerk's office if they have copies, or if it's imperative that we, that we, uh, you know, we keep those. Um, my own personal preference is the city manager, whoever that individual is, ought to be able to hit the ground running on day one. We pay a pretty, um, we provide generous benefits to that individual, and having to go through files is not something that I want them to spend their time doing, uh, when they're, when they're first brought into this organization. So, I'm very comfortable with having Mayor Potem Girba and Al Getzmann work with the clerk's office to, uh, to go through those files, retain what's, what's appropriate to retain, and to, uh, to recycle and remove from the, the office that which is, is no longer necessary.
And with all due respect, Your Honor, you're making a decision and presuming for somebody that haven't even had an interview yet, so I, I think it's best to wait, and, you know, they, they can be scanned and recycled when the permanent city manager is hired, and it can end up her or his review. I just, I don't see any reason to touch any files at this time.
Yeah, well, I, I understand your perspective, I emphatically disagree. I know that I wouldn't want to come into a job and have to go through all the, the desk drawers and files and determine what needs to be retained and what, what ought not to be, um, but that's obviously a philosophical difference that, that you and I have. Um, Councilmember Del Orco, any, any thoughts on this matter?
I, I guess I don't really have strong feelings one way or the other, if there's, if there's not any harm into just moving things to the basement since we have room down there, um, maybe that's a, a middle compromise, um, and so nothing's thrown out, but we can still accomplish the goal of cleaning out the office, um, that would be my only suggestion.
Okay, fair enough.
I can chime in here, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And by the way, folks, if you're not talking, if you could mute your screen, because we're getting a lot of feedback from somebody.
Kristen, I think your fan is, uh, making noise on your microphone.
Oh, it shouldn't be, because it's not facing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was it.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, just from a staff perspective, I, I fully think this is an operational thing, this should be discussed at council. The other thing is, someone who has been a manager before, the last thing you want to do is walk into all of this, that has just boxes and boxes, old papers, so by having my folks and other staff and my council members just go through and follow the record and hatchet policy that we follow through the state, I see no issue with us going and doing this ourselves.
Right, and I agree with that. Mayor Potem Girba, any additional thoughts?
Um, I just volunteered because it was part of the transition team and felt that, you know, that's one of the things that we could take off staffs, and honestly, I know 25 years' worth of history, and I had no intention of throwing anything out that isn't necessary, but I know our, our clerk is, um, book of record for anything that really is required and needs to be maintained. This idea was just to kind of separate it out, and if need be, we can just put it all into a box somewhere and at least categorize it, and if it's scanned, and if it needs to be kept down in the basement, that's fine, I'll have it brought with that.
Okay, all right. Uh, Councilmember CO?
I've always been a believer that if it's not needed, throw away.
Okay, uh, back to Councilwoman Dillon, any additional thoughts?
Thank you. Um, what I know that I had suggested at the transition meeting was that, well, Mr. Del Orco has just mentioned, which is at this point, just taking the filing cabinets and everything, and just shift them to the basement at this point, um, I feel like right now, staff has a lot on the plate for, for mature staff, um, we've got a lot of projects going, and I did feel like this should be the priority for our staff right now, um, and especially for our clerk who's getting ready for an election, um, so I just thought that, you know what, kind of find some compromise in the middle, put them in the basement, um, outside, out line, and maybe we can look back at it over time, or whatever the case may be, um, because I don't know what the city's document retention policy is, I don't know what your standard filing policy is, that's not my job, and so I, I, I can't be a part of the process, and I, I don't know, I, I appreciate that Mr. Girba has the, the, the extensive knowledge, um, of past processes and, and activities of the city, and why we're willing to be able to do this. I just don't feel like this should be a priority for us right now.
Okay, Councilmember Kamara Sulek.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, and I think Mr. Del Orco's suggestion is a good middle ground, um, and, and I don't know the policy either, and if, if we have documents going back to the late 80s, you know, it was cleaned out 14 years ago, not saying that we should do everything that we did or didn't do 14 years ago, but, um, I would imagine, um, Mr. Getzmann and the clerk's office has more pressing things to do, so take it down in the basement, it's a lot easier than putting it up in the attic, um, the way there isn't an attic, but, um, and, and deal with it later, and I think is the best way to handle it, and a good middle ground.
Okay, uh, Mr. Green, then what I would suggest is, uh, obviously, you're the Intrum city manager, so you can make the call as to, to who's involved and, and when this happens, but I would just, uh, put all of those files then in some boxes and move them to, uh, to, to vital records or storage in the basement, um, so that those desk drawers and filing cabinets are clean, um, and available for the new city manager whenever he or she begins their tenure here at the city of Celine.
Noted.
Okay. Uh, who did I miss? Uh, Councilwoman Dillon, did you have any other board commission reports?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to make mention that the city manager hiring committee has been meeting and is actively pursuing all avenues, and we're looking forward to seeing it.
Very good. And Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any boarder commission, um, reports?
Uh, not till tomorrow when the, uh, the council meets, so nothing else at this time, thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's transition into reports and other announcements. Uh, let me begin, I've got several, um, and this first is very serendipitous because of the six-and-a-half-hour power outage yesterday, but, uh, earlier last week, um, I have had a meeting scheduled that will be transpiring next week with some regional reps from DTE, and I know there's a number of people in town who have been concerned with the frequency that they lose power at their home or business. I messaged on this today in my weekly PSA, uh, and if there's people who live in town who lose power frequently for protracted periods of time, I would encourage them to email my office with their name and address so that I can convey that to DTE. Second, um, and I meant to bring this up at our last meeting on July 6th, the West Side Medium, um, adjacent to Mills and Oakwood Cemetery, um, that does not have an irrigation system, that looks like, um, I was going to use a really rude word, but this is a, this is a, a family-friendly meeting, so I won't. It, it looks like hell, um, and I think we don't have the time and resources to deal with that, uh, appropriately this year. I did have a brief conversation with, um, Intrum DPW Director Bennett, and I actually think that would look better if just all of those plants were removed in there. Most of the plants have died, uh, what's in there currently is, is some, some very weak-looking perennials and some weeds, um, and I think empty would actually look better. So, I offer that for consideration if, um, and I would welcome the feedback from my, my colleagues. Before I transition to that, however, I do want to read in its, in totality, the resolution that you so aptly approved earlier this evening, naming racism as a public health crisis and committing to take action. I think it's an important step that, that, that we took here, uh, at city council, uh, on behalf of the city of Celine, and I'll, I'll note before I read it that our former colleague, uh, Mayor Potem Tahar, um, provided a lot of time and insight into, uh, the wordsmithing of, of this resolution. Uh, whereas a race is a social construction with no biological basis, and whereas racism is a, a social system with multiple dimensions, individual racism that is internalized or interpersonal, systematic racism that is institutional and structural, and is a system of structuring opportunity and assigning value based on social interpretations of how a person looks, and whereas racism unfairly disadvantages specific individuals and communities, unfairly advantages other individuals and communities, and thereby saps the strength of the whole society through the waste of human resources, and whereas racism causes persistent, uh, discrimination and disadvantage in many areas of life, such as criminal justice, housing, education, and employment, and whereas a well-established body of public health research over three decades demonstrates that racism is a social deterrent to health, and that health inequities are due to racism, and whereas we are appalled by the recent murders and grieve for the countless other people of color who have lost their lives to racial violence in the history of our nation, whereas the COVID-19 crisis has exacerbated existing racial inequities and continues to disapropately, um, disproportionately, excuse me, cause devastation and death among people and communities of color, and whereas public , uh, resolutions are the first step in a movement to advance racial equity and justice, and must be followed by strategic action. Now therefore be resolved that city council on behalf of the citizens of Celine, um, on behalf of the city of Celine, excuse me, that city council publicly names racism as a public health crisis affecting our entire nation and society, and that city council and city staff will work to create equity and justice-oriented organizations by identifying specific activities to increase diversity and incorporating anti-racism principles within leadership staffing and contracting, and that the city council and city staff will seek educational opportunities to address and dismantle racism and expand the, uh, understanding, and expand understanding of intolerance, that the city of, that the city council will work to build alliances and partnerships with neighboring organizations and municipalities that are confronting racism, and that city council calls upon the governor and our state and federal officials to join with other Michigan municipalities to declare racism as a public health crisis and to enact equity in all policies in the state of Michigan. And I'll sign my hand and seal this document actually later tonight on July the 20th. Mr. Del Orco, your thoughts on, um, for the finite period of time removing the, um, what's left of the perennials and weeds on that westernmost island?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. It's clear that we're, uh, without irrigation, we're not at this time able to take proper care of that area, and if we just get rid of the debris that's in there, it'll, it'll be more attractive than it is now.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Girba?
I'm fine with that, and maybe put, I don't know, rocks or something there just to keep the weeds out of it.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember CO?
I agree, I think I would react to that.
Okay, Councilwoman Mitchell?
I agree, and I would also encourage that spot to be looked at by the Arts and Culture Committee as a prospective spot for something.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Um, yes, I'm in agreement that it is not very attractive at this point. I will say that I have had a recent conversation with the H of H and A, of A and H landscapers who runs the other planters, um, at the corner, who's the other two medians, and they did suggest that there are things that can be planted in there, and they are more than happy to assist the city with that, so, um, I would definitely encourage DPW to reach out to them, um, and, and see what is available. They, they obviously know the condition of it, that it is not water, but they seem confident that there were some planting that could be put in there, um, to make it look better.
Okay, Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
I think that's a wonderful idea. Uh, I, I definitely think it needs to be removed, but if we could get something else in there that, uh, might look a little, a little nicer, I'm all for it.
Very good. Um, Intrum Manager Green, then if you could speak to, uh, Intrum DPW Director Bennett and get that on a, a work schedule to get those, uh, um, perennials and weeds removed, and then maybe if you could, uh, between yourself or any of your subordinates, reach out to A and H and maybe have a discussion about what could be done next spring in terms of planting, considering that there's no irrigation or drip system in that, uh, in that particular island. Very good. Uh, other reports or announcements, Mr. Del Orco?
Not at this time.
Mr. Girba? Mr. CO?
Yes, my head, Your Honor.
Please.
Oh, it was down in the cemetery this afternoon and this morning, and some of the people who are responsible for the reconstruction of the windows down there, they're now finishing the glazing, and they're putting in, um, tempered glass instead of fiberglass, the old plexiglass, that tends to be yellow over time, so the, the total effect is that they look like 300% better than what they did before.
Very good.
There to be, there to be a lot of work taken up.
Appreciate that. Uh, Councilwoman Mitchell, any other reports or announcements?
Um, yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I had the pleasure of touring the depot and the Red Shiller Farm with Lance Holland, and we talked about many different subjects and deeper areas. Uh, the livestock farm that holds carriages on the depot site, it is quite badly rotted at the bottom, so all of the herbal wards, those are starting to just rot away, um, so I would anticipate being asked about some remediation at some point. Uh, we also discussed, would it be possible to have a glass display, I guess it would be tempered glass, so that the carriages were possible to be viewed all the time. all the time. So that's, that's all I can say. Thanks.
Councilwoman Mitchell, any other reports or announcements?
No, but that's me.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Dillon?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wygowski, do you want to provide a wastewater treatment plant update and discuss the, and I guess we're gonna have a discussion about the department manual?
So, I apologize, I just got back into town before this meeting, but yeah, the industrial water tower is back online. Very pleased with that, and to defer amount of overtime to backwash filters during the middle of the night. And we reported no pressure problems or problems with water system during that, that took about a month, so that's very good. We had the repair company come out at our flame gas burner for the methane burner for the digester. They found that the pressure regulator was having problems like we thought, and they corrected that and made a huge adjustment. So the flame is a lot higher, but the digester is not venting any gas on its own that was getting off orders. And the other thing is the bioscaver has really been working well, and we took it out of research mode, put it into single pass mode. So legally, I have not received any complaints, and I already have another talent this weekend.
Do you want to address the department manual at all?
I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Okay. All right, well, maybe a member of council can enlighten us. Mr. Del Arco, any questions for our wastewater treatment superintendent?
Yes, Steve, I'm relieved to hear that the water tower project went as scheduled. It sounds like it was a success on all fronts and that things went well there, so that's very good news. Thanks for sharing that. And also, so the flame burner, it's now the situation that it goes less frequently, but it sounds like you also managed to get it quieter as well, is that correct?
Yes, the technician, I notified him of the complaints, he made a minor adjustment, and I think it is a little bit quieter, and it is going off much less frequent than it was.
Okay, very good. And just to follow up from my email this, earlier this afternoon, I was wondering if you could, from my tour of the plant last few weeks ago, we discussed the situation with the secondary clarifier. I was wondering if you could give an update on the sludge line blockage there and the residual water that was at the bottom of the offline secondary clarifier?
Sure. First of all, my outlook and my microlog outlook is working for some reason, but I didn't see your email, but as I left Friday, I talked to my assistant, Art Fetic, driving around with those pumps out there to empty the clarifier. So he was calling Michigan Catawanna to get rid of the pump, just began to clear that line out, so clear the break out. So I don't know if that was done today or if it's scheduled for tomorrow, I'm not sure. I'll be in the office tomorrow morning, but it was not awarded today.
So you're referring to the sludge line feeding the secondary clarifier?
Yes, we need to get that clarifier down so we can see what we're pushing back into the clarifier.
Right. Okay, were you able to get the water out of the bottom of it?
That's what we're running on today.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, thanks for that.
Mr. Mauerl had to step away for a minute, so I will be asking my questions next. Steve, we did have one odor complaint today, different than our normal concern, who has been complaining for the last couple days, but this one was a different individual on Crestwood, so just FYI, we did have an odor complaint today. My other question was to deal with, I think the mayor had mentioned something about a manual. There was a recommendation that we, at one time, addressed the issue of our Q and A and basically getting the information put together in an operational manual and so forth. And I believe we were looking at a proposal, that was something that you may have been working with City Manager Campbell. Are we proceeding on that, or where do we need to work on that at this point?
Yeah, I have a draft completed, so if we do a little more work on that, I'd like to run it by the Eagle also, and I'm just seeing that and make suggestions, but I have the frequencies outlined and our methods outlined, so I can share that with you shortly.
That'd be great, or work with our administrator, Green, because I think that would be helpful to get that going at this time. Moving on to Councilmember Seal, do you have any questions for Steve?
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mitchell, do you have any questions for Steve?
I guess my only question was, Steve, who was you laying odor complaints while you were out of town?
Well, I was just out of town for the weekend, so I would go to the operator that was working the weekend, would answer the phone.
Oh, I see.
It would only be during the eight hours that somebody was there, we don't have a 24-hour hotline, so to speak.
Right, okay. I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dillon, do you have any questions for Steve?
I do, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Wygowski. You know, I always ask about the Nova filters. Have we surpassed our 100 days? Yes.
Yes, we have on, what's number two, that started on March 29th, so we are past the 100 days.
Okay, and if we're operating correctly?
We were operating as expected as of Friday, but I wasn't in today, so we'll check tomorrow.
Okay, and so what does that mean now that we surpassed the 100 days?
It's a two-year warranty begins.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good to know. And then I wanted to ask you, it seems like we keep buying a lot of new pumps. Are they old pumps? Are they, do they have a lot of wear and tear, and that's why they go around so often? Should we be looking at something different?
Yeah, you know, they operate, for example, like the industrial, industrial, you know, pump station there, you know, the pumps are running pretty much 24/7, so they're gonna wear out, you know, four or five years of, it's not an unreasonable life for a pump that has a lot of use. So we have several lift stations, we have several pumps at wastewater plant, we have several pumps at water plant, so yeah, it is a wearable part. Usually when they, when we replace a pump, we always get a repair price, and then, you know, decide whether it's worth repairing or if it makes sense to get a new pump. But certain of our stations run a lot, other ones that don't run as frequently, the pumps will last longer.
Okay. And where do we stand with the RBCs? Are they all functional now? We have two that were down, I believe.
Yeah, we have 16 that are functional, the two electrical buckets have been repaired and installed, so we're going to rotate the drums to get them weighted optimally hopefully this week.
Okay, and the other ones, wasn't there one or two that still had some rotation issues?
No, we solved that by, I almost see that a little time, so they are all in service except for the two that have the electrical problems.
Okay. And then my last question is gonna be about the pump that's being used for the clarifier. I saw that piece of equipment, and frankly, it looks like a piece of old farm equipment that had been sent out in the field for about four years. Are we looking at replacing it? I mean, I feel like we need something that's more reliable. I believe you use that when we have flooding issues too, and I'm concerned that it's unreliable.
Yes, so we have money in the budget for this fiscal year, and I've talked to Alex Linky from the DPW, and he talked about we're going to select a pump, and he's going to put it on the system that Mickey Joe had mentioned earlier, I don't remember what it's called, but yeah, we're going to get a pump that is versatile enough to help us out during flood conditions, and also we can hopefully bypass the lift station if we have a problem with the lift station. So, and something that has a pretty good offer on it, so it won't be annoying to our neighbors. So we haven't selected a pump yet, but it is approved for this budget year.
Okay, so is it probably like a priority for you? Or I mean, is it something that you're gonna be getting soon? I guess I'm a little disappointed that that tank still hasn't been able to be pulled out at this point, because it was a few weeks ago now, that that's, you know, that that's been stagnant.
Yeah, so that pump, the old pump that you're talking about, that wasn't even in service for several years, and Alex got it going, so that's a luxury that we haven't had, it needs to be replaced. We can see that, you know, we need a new pump. We will, like I say, we'll be renting one this week for a couple days to get that tank down, and maybe we'll, if we like that pump, we'll look into purchasing that, but I'm not sure about Mark Order, what size pump he ordered, and what exactly he'll be there. But, you know, we will, I'll give it to DPW, and Alex handles most of those larger purchases, so we'll have a recommendation.
Okay, and then just lastly, as far as odor, I know that Mrs. Markuster has made some complaints pretty much daily about the odor in her area. I know the other day I was at People's Heart, and it was a big function over there. Is that all coming from that clarifier at this point?
No, I don't believe so, because when we stand right next to it, as you've been there, you don't smell it. So I'm surprised to hear that there are odor complaints, because I thought the system was operating very well, although it's a little puzzling to me. Like I say, my outlook is not working this weekend, and I'm not sure what's going on. I'll check tomorrow, but bioscaver was operating very well, and so is the digester has, so I'm surprised to hear there were odor complaints.
Well, thank you very much.
And Councilmember Kamara Sulek, do you have any questions for Steve?
Yes, thank you. So for the clarifier being down, that's been at least three weeks. So how come, was there a blockage, why it's not draining, and do we need a pump, or what's the typical process?
Yeah, there's a blockage.
Or get drained?
So, yeah, there's a blockage in the line that drains it, that's why we took it down, so we could clear that blockage. We put a flushing valve on that, we tried flushing up the fire hose, but no success at this point. So we're trying to get that water removed. It's been, you know, during the time that we had the water tower offline too, so it's been a pretty busy time, so we've been kind of short on manpower, but the pumps that we've tried working with have not worked to fully empty that tank, so we are renting a pump that should empty that tank. But the line is clogged, and there's not any flush ports available on that line because they weren't designed in there, so we're trying to backflush it, and if we can get a hydraulic head removed from that tank, we're hoping that we can backflush the fire hose to clear that line.
How often do the clarifiers get drained and flushed out?
Theoretically, you should do them every other year. I mean, if you have two clarifiers, yeah, you should drain it and check it every other year to make sure everything looks all right. In theory, you know, that's what the manual would suggest.
How often do we do it?
This is the first clarifier that's been down since I've been there, I've been there, this is two years now.
All right. So that could contribute to it clogging up then, about it not being drained and cleared out?
I wouldn't say that, no, that's not, because you're just putting it into another clarifier, so it's not like you're having anything all the way. What you drain them for is to inspect the mechanisms to make sure they're intact, and you know, the stuff that goes in that tank is supposed to go up through a hopper and through a pipe, and when that gets clogged, many plants have a way to flush it back. Ours is inadequate, so it's hard to get that flush back.
And that's where the pump comes in?
Just to remove the stuff so we can see what we're flushing back, yes.
Okay. Well, I've gotta ask you, why don't we have a pump? Why don't we have at least one pump that works and that we can have on hand for flooding? And I mean, I appreciate getting old, you know, the old pumps to work, but we have so many problems with pumps lately, and with other issues with the plant, you know, and the smell, and then this is contributing to it. What are we supposed to tell people with this stench complaints? You know, it's one thing after another, and it seems like having a functioning pump on hand would be the best practice, to be able to, especially if there is no mechanism, and a modern way to clean it out.
Yeah, I don't know why they've never had a pump on, and since, you know, I don't, but I guess there hasn't been a real need for it. But like I say, it's in the budget for this year. When I stand by the clarifier, I don't smell anything there. I know that's the culprit that we keep pointing to, but it seems like when I've had council members there, when we stand by the clarifier, nobody claims that's the smell, but we always might do it at this type of meetings, so I'm a little puzzled. But I'm not sure where the odor is coming from, maybe it's that, we're trying to address it, and then work out some other things, so.
Why is it taking, why is it taking three weeks? I mean, we have one problem after another at the wastewater treatment plant. Why couldn't we have rented a pump two weeks ago?
Because we were trying to work with the pumps that we had.
All right. It's kind of difficult to explain to residents that the new drive there, that it's, you know, it makes it sound like it's not a priority that we don't have the equipment that we, you know, that we need. I know you're stretching it, and there's a lot of other priorities, but when we have smell issue after smell issue, and, you know, I was there three weeks ago, and when we had this first smell that it was down, and I would implore you for that to be a priority, so that we don't have these continuous, not continuaries. Lots of many residents, they, you know, it is continuing, and that we can avoid this, because the Nova filters are working, bioscaver's working, we have, you know, steps forward, but then it also feels like there's no steps back, you know? So I would really like to get it resolved, and I'm sure you do as well. So I hope that we can get a pump rented ASAP and get that cleared out.
Yeah, I agree, I hope that's the problem. I hope it's that easy to take care of that clarifier, to take care of the odor. I hope so, we'll work on that.
All right. And do you have enough staff to be able to handle everything that's going on with the plant, both the wastewater treatment plant and the water?
Yeah, you know, the water tower project was a pretty big deal, so it's pretty thin, and it's very hot also, extremely hot, we had high water demand, so that was pretty labor-intensive, that's a once-over-15-year project, so I feel we have inadequate staff.
All right, thank you.
Is that everybody, Mr. Girba?
I believe so.
Okay, very good. I would encourage folks to exercise some brevity here, we've already gone more than four hours, and we do have a closed session. So we're gonna transition to the second to last discussion item, which is 7706, Celine Ann Arbor Road Annexation Request. Mr. Green, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, sir, again, since we've been here for over four and a half hours already, we'll try to make this quick. As you know, in your packet, we got a letter requesting that we explore the option of annexing that property within the city. So the next step for us would be to get a consensus from council if you would like to do that and explore that option, and then staff can take it from there and hopefully come back possibly in two weeks with an official resolution that we can submit to this thing, get this going.
Okay, any thoughts from council members, Mr. Del Arco? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, if folks want more time to think about this, that's fine, we can revisit it as a discussion item in two weeks.
I think absorbing these islands into the city is a good idea, the more that we can remove... The more that we can remove, the better we're going to be. Was there any recommendations or advice given for timelines of how long this process would take? For, I know the business owner is concerned about this as well. What's the timeline because of the mortgage concerns?
Yeah, it's going to be completely dependent on the state and the state and the boundary commission, because I don't know what their meeting schedules like due to COVID, if they're meeting at the hall or they're postponing meetings. So sooner we get this going, the better.
Okay, all right, well, I'd say let's get the ball rolling.
Mayor Potem Girba?
Yeah, I agree. I think bringing this island in is a good idea. It's one of the ones we wanted. I was concerned with a lot next to it, but Mr. Green has confirmed that it's already in the city. So this is one location that's by itself, but it is surrounded by RA1. And when it comes into the city, it would be RA1. And then I guess we would have to look at it either being rezoned or granting it special use for this type of purpose. There is some professional development on Seline Ann Arbor Road, just not right in this location. But I'm gang-o to bring this in. It's been receiving benefits from the city for decades, so I think it's time to make sure it starts paying its way.
Thank you, that was clear. Mr. Seo?
I agree with my two colleagues a month before. I think that it only makes good sense to bring these islands into the city that are adjacent to city streets. And I appreciate many of the benefits the city provides. My question, I guess, would be Mr. Green, do you know, would there be tap-in fees for them? Or are they already on the city waters or?
I believe they are already on, they are already on city waters, or that's something I confirmed with DPW. But I'm pretty sure that's our line, right there, they're all tapped in, and they're all charged a triple fee currently.
Okay, all right, I think it'd be a good idea, Mr. Green.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell?
I'm all for bringing them into the city. I just want to point out that there, you know, in that cluster, it could almost be called a block, there are businesses, Lee Picture Frame, Carquest Auto. So I think there is precedent for having the business there that I may only mention.
Okay, Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you, yeah, I've got just a quick question for Mr. Green. And probably you can answer what Mr. Girba said, and I just want clarification. So there is an empty lot next to this parcel. Is that the one that he is referring to?
On the, yeah, on the north side, that's just the grass lot, and that's currently within the city.
That is within the city, okay. Is there an opportunity at this time to sort of bundle our islands? There are a couple on the opposite side of the street too, and sort of make it one big package deal to present to the boundary commission?
We can try. The hardest part with that is, is if those residents don't want it. So we started with this one, because this person is officially requesting it, which makes the process a lot easier.
Right, well, once again, those residents are enjoying the benefits of the city. I mean, I do realize that they do have high water sewer bills. But there are also the mountain road village from which they're benefiting and such. So I would be in favor, adamantly in favor of trying to bundle and bring in some of those islands.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Camaro Sulek?
I agree, let's get that property annexed in, let's get that moving. And I think it'd be a good idea to reach out, maybe start seeing what, like Ms. Dillon was saying, to bundle at least, maybe get some pressure going on the other islands to bring them in sooner than later.
Okay, Mr. Green, I think it's unanimous. You have your consensus.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, and the last item is meeting organization. I think that was a request of Councilwoman Mitchell, so the floor is hers.
Thank you, Your Honor. So at one point, this body had a discussion about council meetings, and we did a couple of things. We moved the starting time earlier, I think that was Mr. Girba's suggestion. And then we also discussed, as a general rule, not having as many things on an agenda that seemed to be on an agenda these days. So from what I remember, the agreement that council came to was that we would not have a closed session on top of presentations. And I have to ask my fellow council members, is it, did we also talk about a work meeting? So, you know, here it is, oh, it's quarter to eleven. And I want to be mindful of our staff that have to work. I want to be mindful of council members that are employed full-time. And I don't have a strong feeling other than, I don't like to be jolled, and I have to make things brief. I don't like to be jolled, and we have to hurry through items. And there's just a push-pull, you know, here we have two agendas in a row with a lot of items. And it seems to be going against what the group agreed to. So I want to check in with council members and see what their thoughts are.
Mr. Green, I know you had some thoughts on this. Did you want to chime in first before we do a round robin?
Yeah, first off, this meeting could have been a lot longer. We've kicked probably four items to the next meeting, just because of what the line is. But our, my opinion at least, is sometimes we don't have a choice. Sometimes we have these presentations that have to take place. We have these work sessions that need to happen, and when we're trying to just move everything forward at once, the more we push on the road, the longer those meetings are going to get. So sometimes we're just going to knock them out at the point.
I mean, I would say, as a general rule, yes, we should try to avoid presentations and closed sessions on the same meeting. But we're here to do the people's business, and no one forced us to take any of these jobs. We're here to work to make the quality of life better for the residences, residents, property owners, and business owners of the city of Seline. And I would also note, one of the things that we decided two years ago was that we would provide the agenda and support material the Wednesday before a Monday council meeting, which was a significant deviation from the previous standard, which was we provided the agenda and support material the Thursday before council meetings. And the genesis for that was to provide folks ample time to address questions and concerns in advance of a regular meeting. So if the desire is to genuinely reduce the length of meetings, you have Wednesday night, all day Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to address questions and concerns, which I think is ample time, especially for enumerated action items that are outlined on the agenda. So that's my take on the issues. Mr. Delarco?
I think it's important for us to be mindful of everyone's time. It is a little bit stressful to have a four or five hour meeting when we, some of us have to work in the morning. But I do also recognize that oftentimes there are extenuating circumstances that are beyond our control that place these demands on us. And some of these closed sessions are scheduled around meetings that are involved any other parties, and we can't push them off. And the police presentation this evening was pushed off and pushed off because of COVID, and I think it was important that we had that today. As long as we're generally aware of our own ideas that we should keep the time of meetings to a minimum and observe these rules whenever possible, I think that's all we can do. Because there are certainly extenuating circumstances, especially in light of everything that got delayed from COVID. So I think we're doing the best we can.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Girba?
I mean, as many years as I've been doing this, we've had issues where council meetings get dragged out because of, you know, really difficult and complex issues and things so forth. I agree with Ms. Mitchell. We should look at, you know, when we can have the agenda be addressed so that it can be reasonable. That's one thing. But I also believe that it may be at the point now, because we have so many items and things, that we need to consider a limitation on our questioning in terms of a three or five minute period. I think we're getting to a point where what we can say is, can be done in a briefer period of time and still achieve what we want to do. We do it during our, and we've learned how to do it during our work sessions and so forth, and during our Zoom meetings. And so that might be beneficial in allowing a first and a second question round. And hopefully that could help, you know, focus us more on what our real concerns and questions are and so forth. And then addressing it that way, besides the issue that we talked about being prepared for our meetings and so forth. I think that's helpful. But, you know, it is the issue of, we get a complex item that we may have to have more discussion on it, but then, of course, the chair and the council could agree to extend time and period on that. It's just a little more professional way of handling it, maybe.
Okay, it's a good idea. Councilmember Seo?
I agree with Mr. Girba. I think that probably limit council members' time to speak and question. I think it's either three to five minutes, that sounds reasonable, based on the complexity of the issue to be considered. And I further feel that longer meetings are better than having additional meetings. That's been proposed on occasion by some of our members. I'd much rather face a longer meeting, one longer meeting, and know that it's over. I don't want to have to worry about having additional meetings when I'll be in jail.
Fair enough. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I would actually disagree with a lot of what Mr. Seo said respectfully. I'm contemplating whether we do need to move to additional meetings to more than two meetings per month to make the agenda more manageable, to leave time. We compromised, well, we agreed to set the meetings a half hour earlier. Do you recall, we shaved that off of our work meetings. And with that, we have less time to discuss. You know, an hour is generally not enough for a work meeting. And so there tends to be spillover into the council meeting with additional questions. I know I ask a lot of questions, and I ask questions before the meeting, and I ask questions after the meeting. And I understand the concept of being brief, absolutely. But I do think that we still have, there are questions that come in during the meeting. There are questions that are raised by other council members during the meeting that is given an opportunity for another council member to reflect or respond to. So I think it's something that we really need to look at long and hard. We're never going to have less to do. And we can't kick the can, you know, as Mr. Green stated. At the transition meeting, we really went through the agenda and line by line, item by item, and talked about, well, do we really have to do this? Will we push this one off? What can we do? And tried to gauge it by what the discussion was going to be. And we are still at 11 o'clock and have to go into a closed session now. So I think that's something, maybe closed sessions are separate meetings. And, you know, so that when this meeting is over, we all go home, and we don't sit for another hour or so in another meeting. So I think it's something that we really do need to address as a body and figure out how we can best move forward. Because the other piece is that it's not just about us. At the end of the day, it isn't. We have residents who are watching us, who want to participate, that have to sit through these long meetings to get their three minutes at the end. Or that want to listen to a proclamation that's being read at the very end of a meeting. You know, it's not really necessarily fair to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Camaro Sulek?
Yes, thank you. I know there isn't an easy answer to this, and this is something that I've struggled with because of all the reasons that have, that Ms. Dillon and others have shared. There are a lot of moving parts, and we can't forecast everything. I do think it's important to have enough discussion time. Sometimes three or five minutes is enough, other times it's not. So I think we're doing about the best we can there with that. But it's the amount of items that are on the agenda and that get added. I do think there may be times where we do have to have a third meeting for the month, depending on what's happening. I just don't think that there's an easy answer at this time. I think we have to, as we are, be conscious of our time, staff time, and taxpayers' time. So maybe we look out a little bit further ahead. And I know we've talked about this before, about having a long-term calendar, the factor everything in when it's budget season, when there's typical items and concerns that come up during the year to try to plan it out better. And I know with COVID and everything else going on, that we haven't been able to get to that. So hopefully we will. But for now, I know there isn't an easy answer, except to be mindful and do the best we can right now. But I'm open to having an additional meeting here and there if we need to, because we also have to be mentally sharp, and it's kind of difficult to be at 11 o'clock. And that's just me, so.
I heard two suggestions that I really liked. One was, well, actually, one was a suggestion I heard, and the other is a suggestion I'm going to offer, excuse me. I actually liked the idea that was, I believe it was articulated by Councilwoman Dillon, about having separate meetings when there is a closed session. What does the rest of the group feel, think about that?
I'm in support of it. It enables us to focus exclusively on the issues that's being deliberated in a closed session, and we can come to the table, as Kevin suggested, fresh and sharp, and I think it's a good plan.
Mr. Girba?
I'm fine with that.
Fine with that. Mr. Seo?
It depends on how often these issues come up. I guess we have to go back on the past year and count up the times we had closed sessions. You mean we'd have an additional meeting for your one of those closed sessions?
Well, maybe, I mean, depending on the length of the agenda, maybe not for everyone. But, you know, on an evening like this, when you had a substantive agenda with a work meeting, presentations, and a number of discussion items, then maybe convening a few days later for a closed session, I think would be, at least from my perspective, a little bit more manageable and palatable.
I think if we exercised that sparingly, it would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
I appreciate that. I think that's going to help alleviate some of the pressure. I guess I'm still feeling that push-pull between we're doing the people's business, and some of that just needs to happen in discussion. And so when I, when we're offered the choice to cut discussion, especially when we have these hybrid meetings, which takes even longer, I don't know what to say. I mean, some councils have a work meeting, you know, so could we, we have three pretty big issues tonight. So could we have had a work meeting last week where we had a chance to ask questions, and it's public? And then we can go through agenda items more quickly? I'm willing to hear people's suggestions. I think the closed meeting one is a bear start.
Okay, Councilwoman Dillon, I already heard your opinion on this matter. Mr. Camaro Sulek, what are your thoughts?
I think that's a good idea. I think, like a meeting like tonight would be a good example of having the closed session at a separate time, and maybe even having one or two agenda items with it. We'd have to look at that, you know, proactively, but I would be all for that.
Good, and the other one that I would offer is an idea, because I do think, I am sensitive to the fact that oftentimes, depending on the issue we discuss at a work meeting, an hour is not really ample time to get close to consensus or conclusion. And I know our regular meetings start at seven now. Could people on occasion make a 5:30 work meeting? Mr. Delarco, could you make that work on occasion?
Yes, on occasion, not every week, but.
Mr. Girba? Okay, Mr. Seo?
Yes, I'm open to that.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Camaro Sulek?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, I think those are two things that we can do in the short term. And, you know, I think that the broader issues of how we function and manage meetings and our, you know, individual approach is probably best addressed in a forthcoming or upcoming retreat with Diane Muckler. Evidently, I need to double back with her to see if we can set a date for that, maybe sometime in August. But I think in the short term, for some of these issues, and for example, intra-manager green, I would recommend that our work meeting then on the third be at 5:30, since we're going to be going over a lot of data. Um, since we're going to be going over a lot of data, um, that was received via a, um, a survey and then at three public open houses, and then talking about our long-term strategies, reference the rec center. That's a discussion that we'll probably need an hour and a half.
Sounds good.
Good. And then I, I did like the idea, and there's obviously consensus, to do, uh, uh, separate meetings when there's a, the closed session, especially on a substantive nature, um, as opposed to tacking it onto an agenda, which may already be full of, of, of action items and discussion items. So, okay. Very good. Um, if there's nothing further, we come now to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments in the audience this evening? No? Okay. Uh, the chair will, or the record will reflect, there are no, um, comments that will be made, um, in council chambers. Uh, Clerk Royal, did we receive any, uh, comments, uh, for this second public comment period?
There was quite a bit of, uh, comments on Zoom chat, but it was mostly about the downtown parking.
Okay.
I don't know if all of those read or not.
Unless there's objection, um, I would say no. And one of the things I would suggest moving forward, as long as we're on Zoom or using a hybrid approach, is when people type in a comment, um, under the chat icon, um, I'm going to ask that they indicate whether their comment is for the first closed session, the second closed session for a public hearing, or whether they just want to offer sentiments and, and insights on, on the discussion, the, the current discussion. Uh, so we'll give folks a few minutes. If you do have, um, comments, concerns, reference anything we discussed this evening or any other municipal issues, you may, um, click on the chat icon and type in your comments and questions now.
Mayor, there is one from Tran Landmore. He's asking, is council taking action when it comes back from closed session?
Yes, I, I believe we are not, but, uh, staff can correct me on that. Uh, it's my understanding, Intra City Manager Green, that, uh, while we will be reconvening into regular session, we're not going to be taking any additional votes.
And that's my understanding from, uh, notes for closed session.
Okay, yep. We'll be reconvening simply to reconvene into regular session and then to adjourn our meeting. Thank you for the question, Tran. Are there any additional comments or questions? Then the record will reflect there are none. Uh, is there any other business to come before city council this evening? Please note our upcoming meetings, and again, we changed the work meeting time on the third to five-thirty from six. Uh, then at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to go into closed session, discuss strategy connected with the negotiation of collecting, collective bargaining agreements pursuant to Section 8C of the Open Meetings Act. City council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session.
No move?
To convene into closed session, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Seo. Uh, the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Seo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Girba?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we are convened into closed session at, uh, eleven oh three PM. We'd ask that those of you who are participating remotely or who are in the audience now,